Emergency checklist. So as Chair of the Pembroke School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I'm confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing Cisco Webex for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting through the dialing of the following phone number: And the password can be found on the agenda at sau53.org under Remote School Board Meetings header. We also provided public notice of the necessary information to access the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access it using Webex or via telephone. Instructions have also been provided at sau53.org. We're providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has problems accessing the meeting, please email Sandy, that's Svaline, S-V-A-L-I-N-E, at sau53.org. And finally, in the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done via roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether anyone was in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Did you get a text from Jean that he's trying to get in? So I'll give him a minute. So I will go to Ann.
I'm present and alone.
Thank you, April.
Present and alone.
Okay, do we have Amy yet? I don't see Amy, and I don't see Jean's name popping up, so we'll give him a minute. Because he did say he's trying to get in, so... We'll give it one or two minutes, and then we'll get started.
Hi Andy, this is Jean, can you hear me?
Yep, sure you can.
Yeah, I'm having a good time over here trying to sign in, but...
Okay, are you present and alone?
I am present and alone.
Fantastic, okay. Amy let me know that she may be a few minutes late, so...
Amy is present and alone.
Wonderful, okay. Awesome, good. So, let me just get my agenda here. Alright, so called order, we did the emergency checklist. So Agenda Review, I've got a couple of things, but let me check in with Patty first.
I have nothing to add, except we will have a non-meeting at the end.
Alright. It's very loud. Okay. I've got, uh, I'm not sure if I just missed it, or if there was a purpose, but I've got public comments before minutes, I want to switch those and get the minutes taken care of. And then, I think that's it for now. Is there anything, any other changes, Board members, that you had questions about or wanted to try to make?
This is Anne, I do not.
Okay, then let's do minutes. If anybody has corrections, you can go ahead and let me know, and and we can go through them one by one, or if people are comfortable making a motion on all three, we can do that.
Andy, this is April. Could we talk about them one by one? If so, I'd like to address November 17th first.
Go ahead.
Changes. So, one thing that I noticed both on November 17th and November 24th, I think it would be very helpful if, under who's present at this meeting, any school board members who were absent, if they're listed right up there at the top of the meeting, so that would be a suggestion. But on page 18 of November the 17th, it's the 1, 2, 3, 4... It's the first paragraph, or second, I guess technically, second paragraph under number 5, Policy Review. So, it's after my name, where it says, in there, it says, "There was a public meeting on 11/9." Just for clarification, I think it would be nice to add, I did clarify that it was a public meeting of the New Hampshire Home Education Advisory Council. I just don't want there to be any confusion that there was possibly a school board meeting on that date. So I would just like to add, who, the public meeting of what entity? And again, that was the New Hampshire Home Education Advisory Council. Thank you.
Okay, any other corrections or suggestions on 11/17?
This is Anne, I don't have any corrections, so I move, make a motion to accept the minutes with corrections.
Alright.
This is Amy, I'll second.
Okay, on a roll call vote for the minutes of November 17th. Anne?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm yes, thank you. November 24th. April, you said you had similar correction on that one, right?
Right, just on the November 24th, I was absent at that meeting. I think it would be nice, right under who's present, to list school board members who's absent, so if that one could... Just for clarification, on the 17th note, I believe Amy was absent on that date. I was absent on November 24th. That was really my only request on that one.
Alright, others for November 24th? Okay.
I make a motion to accept, approve the minutes of November 24th.
Alright.
So long as that was as corrected, or as revised, or you know, whatever verb, I would like to second that.
Oh yes. So I make a motion to accept the minutes as revised, November 24th.
Awesome, thanks Anne, I second.
Alright, roll call vote, Jean?
Yes. Yes.
Amy?
Yeah.
April?
I'm an abstention because I was absent on November 24th.
Anne?
Yes.
Alright. And I'm yes, thank you. Discussion on December 1st. Is that mine that's doing that feature?
For December 1st, this is April, I have a request for a correction on page 6, 5th paragraph. It states, "Mrs. Vellani CPI Training Line Increased," does that mean we are restraining and isolating more students? I actually ask if we're restraining and secluding. That's a very specific intentional word, because secluding is the involuntary placement of children alone in a place where the child isn't able to escape. It also mirrors language that's in New Hampshire RSA 126U, which is limiting the use of child restraint practices in schools. So I would like to request that the word isolating be changed to secluding, which is the term I used. Thank you.
Okay, others?
Andy, this is Anne, on page 8. We're stating here that probably 1, 2, 3, 4, the 5th paragraph on the bottom, where it says that every student has a device available. Also give a shout out to Amber for her projections. This year, the number was hit dead on. I just wanted to put that Pembroke Academy enrollment. I just didn't think that, it was probably how I said it, but I just wanted to be sure that Amber got credit where for Pembroke Academy numbers.
Okay.
And then, just on page 15, where it says, "Our little Santa Claus is coming to town." It says, "Practice Santa," but it should just be parade.
Okay.
And Sandy, I can send those to you if it's easier, too.
Any others for December 1st, sorry?
So this is, if Amy and Jean don't have any corrections, I move to accept the minutes as corrected.
Alright.
This is April, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, on a roll call vote, I will go with Anne. Jean?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm yes, thank you very much. Okay, so with that, we will move into our first public comment section. We're going to try to keep as close as 15 minutes as we can. We've got a lot to talk about tonight. If this is your first time with us, just a quick recap. Go ahead and use the raised hand button somewhere on your screen, and Mr. Morris will look for those hands and recognize you. When we're finished going through the hands, or we get close to the 15 minutes, we'll switch over and check the call-in numbers, which I think is just Jean right now anyway, but we will check those afterwards. So, Mr. Morris, if you've got hands, you can go right ahead.
At this point, I don't have...
Okay, we'll give it a minute or two.
Andy, I am on the computer now, just, I can't share video for whatever reason.
Okay. Thanks. So then, Dan, I think there is one phone line, if there's still no hands, go ahead and open that phone line, then we can check back for hands. Oh, I guess, I'm sorry, I forgot, you don't do that anymore. If you're, so if you're called in, I believe if you have hit star 6, it will unmute you. So if you're on the phone, and you've got something to contribute, you can go ahead and unmute, and just let me know your name. Okay, one last call for hands, Mr. Morris?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. Then I think we will move on.
Mark can just raise his hand.
Okay, go ahead, Mark. Oh, there you go.
Hi guys, I'm Mark Q. One, done a drive. I just wanted to bring something up to everyone's attention, and I was hoping I maybe we could get some answers tonight. Maybe not just from the school board members, but if you guys could let Tori Barber talk tonight. I had spoken to a few teachers that are in favor of the schools opening up, and when I had asked them if they would be willing to express themselves, they said, "No, they were afraid of the union reprimanding them." I don't know, I don't know really how the union works, or if this is true, but this question is directed towards Tori Barber. If there are any teachers that...
Mark, I'm gonna have to stop you. We cannot accept comments directed at particular individuals that are not members of the Board or members of the administration, especially for things that aren't even necessarily on the agenda tonight. That's not appropriate use of the meeting time. If you want to address the Board, and give us something to take a look at or discuss, that's fine, but we can't have you addressing other individuals in the community.
Okay, okay, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna adjust the Board, and see if you guys can ask the union if it's okay for the teachers to support the parents that are in favor of opening the schools, or if it's true that they have to, if they have to have fear of reprimand for that. If they could, if they could contact their administrators and voice their voice their approval for the schools being open.
Alright, thank you.
We have Roger Monti.
Go ahead, Roger.
Hi, actually, this is Mrs. Monti. I just had a quick question about the returning to school date of January 15th. Is that a date that we're going to return hybrid, or the kids will be coming back full-time?
So, just in case this is your first time, this is not generally a question and answer type session, but I can, I will say, stay tuned if that's on the agenda for tonight.
Okay, so, following that question, my, and this is because of what the CDC has put out as the new guidelines for it changing from 14 days to 10 days. And I totally get the whole quarantining for two weeks after the holidays to be safe. I definitely agree that, you know, people are going to be gathering, things are going to happen. I think it's fine that we quarantine, but shouldn't we be looking at it in a 10-day quarantine after the holidays end, or is the 15th in stone?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you have, Brian Gleaton is next.
What, Brian?
Hey folks, happy early holidays, thanks for putting a long agenda together tonight. Just wanted to comment that I'm looking forward to hearing the plan from the administration on potential changes to returning to school, including some additional information and guidelines by the CDC. So thanks for your time tonight, folks.
Thank you.
Alright, Tim Girardi is next.
Yep, go ahead, Tim.
Evening, everyone. Just echoing what Brian said, looking forward to the plan. My hope is to hear a plan that will give parent choice, and the ability to have a hybrid model, which would include full remote, full in-class, full-time. And in the absence of that, you know, hopeful that we can maybe have some kind of debate around how we get there. You know, I think one, one aspect that I would like to see post-plan presentation would be a, you know, chance for the parents to, to debate to some extent with the Board, with the administration, in terms of pros and cons. Because I think at this point, that level of discourse is appropriate, and definitely needed, especially given where we're at. So looking forward to hearing everything and commenting further later on.
Thanks, Tim.
Melanie Camello?
Go ahead, Melanie.
Hi, I just had a quick comment for specifically Three Rivers School, just because I've seen it myself in helping out a family in our town. I just want to say how wonderful of a job that the teachers, that the staff, the special teachers, the paras, just thank you, they're doing an amazing job. You, it's clearly easy to tell how hard everybody is working. The child that I'm helping out is busy all day long. If we have a question, I email, she's got a response, and I just wanted to say thank you. And it's quite obvious that a lot of planning has gone into it, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Melanie. I'm not sure if Mr. Morris has seen the same thing, I think we've got one more hand, but it looks like Melanie, Tim, Brian, Roger, Mark, your hands are all still up. If you wouldn't mind going and unchecking those, just so we can keep it clean, that'd be great. And I think, Kristen Doyle next, Dan? Go ahead, Kristen. Oh, I can't unmute you, though, sorry.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm gonna kind of go off of what Melanie just said. I am so unbelievably impressed with our teachers and our paras at Hill and TRS. They are enthusiastic, they happily greet our kids every day. I could never in my life be an elementary school teacher. These people have unbelievable patience, and they're giving our students wonderful assignments. The specialist teachers are engaging our kids, my kids run around the house during their specials. Everything, I think, has been going really well for remote. TRS, today I emailed two teachers, and within five minutes, they had both emailed me back, and they were very willing to help in any way. So I really needed to make sure that the Board knew that both Hill and Village, that their people are phenomenal, and that they're doing a great job for our kids. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristen. I can't see any more hands, Dan said, alright. Okay, then with that, we will move on to consent agenda. Patty, do we have anything?
I do not.
Alright, that's easy. Okay, then we'll kind of head into the meat of this. Agenda item number 6 is immediate business, and we're going to start out with the school instructional model. I want to make a quick, I guess editorial comment, I suppose. There was some information that was shared publicly that, at our last meeting, a motion was made to ask the administration to bring a full plan about reopening schools to this meeting. That was not the case, it was not my recollection, so I went back and checked out the minutes, and that was not the case. Ms. Manzelli made a request to put the discussion of the instructional model back on the agenda for this week, because our next meeting isn't until into January. And she felt that that would be too late to have that discussion. So, and there was general agreement, and, you know, I think that I asked Patty to be ready to discuss the matrix, and where our numbers are at, and things like that. But we did not, we certainly did not make a motion, and we did not ask for a full reopening plan for tonight. So I just wanted to clarify that, in case there's anybody that's really here to hear that. Now that being said, I did speak with this chairman, and the administrators have been working on that sort of thing for some time, and did want an opportunity tonight to share kind of what they, what they have. But, you know, it's early, we're not close to the point, you know, we're still a few weeks out from even possibly going back to hybrid. So just kind of wanted to preface it that it's being worked on, and we're going to hear some stuff about it tonight. But, you know, there wasn't a plan shared with you, the public, ahead of time, because it's, it's not, that kind of document was not asked for tonight, so I just wanted to clarify that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Patty, so we can take a look at the matrix.
Okay, I'm gonna start by taking a look at the matrix, and then I'm gonna ask the school nurses are with us, or at least Allison, I think, is presenting our numbers tonight. So, start with the community numbers. I did switch, now that our New Hampshire COVID dashboard is back up and working, I switched from the Global Health Network to the New Hampshire site. So I did note that on the matrix, that all of our numbers tonight are coming from the New Hampshire site, rather than the global site that we were using in the past. So right now, Mayor Matt County is at 543.9 cases per 100,000, and currently Pembroke has 36 active cases. For Pembroke Schools, I indicated remote status, and the nurses do have some updated numbers for us. It's a little bit difficult right now to pinpoint the number of student cases unless they have been reported to us by families or DHHS. So we will give you what we have, what we know to be the case at this point. Staff absenteeism, luckily, we're remote, because we would not be able to be open in any of our schools right now. I think, just talking to John, for example, there were 15 staff members out at Three Rivers School, there's no way we would be able to cover that, but our staff have been able, for the most part, to work remotely, which means that learning gets to continue, and that was the goal. We still have plenty of cleaning supplies, Josh's crew is keeping up with that without any problems. And the, on the second page, you can look at the county data, again, from our New Hampshire COVID dashboard, and that the numbers speak for themselves, and they're significantly higher than they have been in the past. So I think that the Board was, made the, took the appropriate action, and was proactive, because again, we would not be open today, and we've seen some of our other schools that unfortunately have had to also pivot to remote. So, I will ask Allison if it's okay to update our numbers.
Andy, this is April, before we do that, could you please, is the decision-making matrix in our Google shared drive? I'm not finding it, could someone help me out with what the title is it?
I was just looking to April, I don't, I don't think we have it right now.
Could we get that uploaded to our drive, please, so we could do that?
Sure, I sent it to Kathy earlier, I'm wondering if it didn't get in the right folder maybe, but I will make sure that it is in tonight's folder.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, I was muted. So, before we move on to any further discussion, does anybody have questions for Patty on anything she just said regarding the matrix? I do, but I'll wait.
This is Anne, so, the learning model discussion, is that going to be... I'm just trying to find out where this question might be answered. Are we discussing what going, what it's going to look like after January 15th in this matrix, or are we going to discuss?
I had the matrix as the first bullet point, Anne, and then the second bullet point was the learning model discussion. So I was going to report the matrix, and then the nurses report our numbers, and then go into that conversation.
Thank you very much, Patty.
Yep.
Alright, I think Allison, if you...
Yep.
Got something on the air? Go, you can go right ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I, along with the other two schools, have put together some updated numbers on students and staff, as far as our COVID tracking goes. At this point, this is two dates, as of today. At Pembroke Academy, we have had 17 positive cases. Now, this is since our last meeting, where we presented numbers in November. At Three Rivers School, 13 cases. And at Pembroke Hill School, nine cases, for a cumulative case of 39 positives. Going symptomatic students that were sent for testing at Pembroke Academy, we had 153. At Three Rivers School, 66. And at Pembroke Hill School, 70, for a total of 423, which was quite a significant change. Quarantines due to travel, again, this is students, Pembroke Academy was nine, that included the holiday, Three Rivers School, seven, and Pembroke Hill School, two, which gives us a total of 18. Quarantines due to exposure, Pembroke Academy, 84. Three Rivers, 44. Pembroke Hill School, 63, for a total of 209. Quarantine relating to opting out of testing, which means that the families chose not to test, or and to do just the quarantine. So at Pembroke Academy, we had three. At Three Rivers School, there were four. At Pembroke Hill School, 23, for a total of 30. In total tracked cases, at Pembroke Academy, 268. Three Rivers, 134. Pembroke Hill School, 167, for a total of 579 individuals, and that was students. And, let's see, then I'm gonna move on to staff. If you need me to repeat anything, please just ask, I know it's a lot of information.
I'm gonna make sure, just, sorry, Allison, I'm gonna make sure that we share this, as soon as you guys review it, I will post it both in the school board drive, and post it on our website, too, so people can see it. Thank you.
Good.
Andy, I have a question. I wasn't sure what the category was, it was nine for PA, seven for TRS, and two for Hill?
That's quarantine due to traveling.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. So moving on to staff, positive COVID cases of staff members, eight individuals since November last meeting. One at Three Rivers School, four at Pembroke Hill School. Four at Pembroke Hill School with a cumulative of 12 positive cases. Symptomatic and sent for testing at Pembroke Academy, 48. At Three Rivers School, five. Pembroke Hill School, 26, for a total of 79. Quarantine again due to travel with staff, one at Pembroke Academy. One at Three Rivers School. Two at Pembroke Hill School with a total of four. Quarantine due to exposure. Pembroke Academy, 52. Three Rivers School, nine. Pembroke Hill School, 21, for a total of 77. There were no quarantines with opting out of testing, so I'm happy to see that. Pembroke Academy total cases tracked of 48 staff. Three Rivers School was 18. Pembroke Hill School, 53, for a total of 111. And I want to make note, too, that our numbers at Pembroke Academy increased dramatically around just before Thanksgiving and afterwards due to a cluster that we had at our school, which impacted both students and staff tremendously. It was an extensive amount of contact tracing and notification to those who were exposed. And those are the current numbers at this time.
Thank you. Anybody have questions for Allison?
This is April. I just have a question on, would you please define what a cluster is? Like, where is that threshold? Thank you.
Okay, yeah, a cluster is when you have a case that is impacting three plus or more individuals from their positive case. That becomes a cluster because it's all related to that one starting point with that one individual. And it can grow anywhere upwards of that number.
Thank you. Can we find out how many number of clusters that our schools have encountered to date?
At Pembroke Academy, I can say we've only had one cluster that was related to that one particular case in November. The other cases have been all separate in their entity. I will say that I have a lot of concern about more clusters, but unfortunately, I think the numbers are going to be difficult to track due to the fact that most of the exposure is community exposure and not all being reported to us as nurses at the school. We are trying tirelessly to continue to track both students and staff who are not in the buildings and to continue to ask for their daily assessments and for them to notify us when they do have a positive case. And I do explain to community members that it's it's important for us to continue to track these cases so that we have more information going forward when we decide on what our model is next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Andy, this is Ann. It's basically to Patty. I'm concerned about how we're supporting the staff when they're out. You know, financially, but I guess it's at a different time in the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's up to Patty if if you want to address that now.
Can you clarify what you mean by that, Ann?
Well, I know the regulations of what the town is using might be different than the school. I just wanted to find out if you know, we had, you know, like 52 teachers at PA that quarantine due to exposure. So if the same teacher gets exposed and needs to be quarantined more than just once, how will we supporting financially? Are they taking their time, vacation time?
I don't, I would not have those numbers because that would go through the HR office. I'm assuming they would use whatever leave they have available to them, but in terms of specific numbers, I would not have access to those. Sorry.
Oh, no, no, that's fine. I just wanted to see, you know, make sure we're supporting them financially. Thank you.
I would like to just thank everyone, though, for last meeting, for going remote. The numbers definitely show that it was a good decision. So thank you.
Hi, Allison. This is Jean. Just when you were going through the staff, I just missed the positive cases at
PA. To date, we've had eight since November 16th.
November, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
This is April. I I have a question about something that I've heard from several parents in the community is why is the school requesting the result of their children's COVID test when those students will not be back in the building until January? Some people feel like that's quite an overreach. Thank you.
I'm going to address that because the reason that I am requesting, and I believe the other nurses, which certainly can speak to this, those results is I continue to monitor and track our positive and negative results. Unfortunately, there have been times when reporting is not accurate or has been skewed. So I do ask the parents, and it's a voluntary type of issue. They certainly can refuse if they would like to. It's within their rights. But I do ask for those positive and negative results so that I can continue to track those tests and make sure that I have the information that I need so that during times like this, I can make recommendations and give you accuracy on the positive and negative cases.
Thank you. This is April again. This is more a curiosity question. Since you're tracking this data, have you seen any cases of reinfection in students and staff?
So far, I have not, and that is a good question because it's certainly been asked of me more than once. I do know it is possible, especially for those individuals that have, you know, probably quite the susceptibility or immune issues or other comorbidities. But at this time, I am not aware of any particular case where someone's been infected twice, at least within our community.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Andy, this is Ann. I'm have a question concerning the vaccine. I listen to the press conference for the governor every Thursday. And they did say the hospitals will be getting the vaccine first, then the workers at nursing homes. I didn't know if there was any information for school nurses about, you know, how far down the list you might be.
There is, and I thank you for asking that question. Last week, Dr. Chan indicated that school nurses would be involved in the first line of healthcare staff and to be immunized because of our continued exposure through the school system. So we will be getting vaccinated and the anticipation is probably sometime in January for those that choose to.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any more for Allison before we move on? Okay, so the next bullet point is learning model discussion. Patty, do you have anything you want to say before we dive into that?
Nope, I'm ready to go. That's if you're ready.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, maybe I wasn't clear. Do you have a, do you want to kick off the learning model discussion or do you want us to?
Yep.
Okay.
So the first point of business, I think, is to talk about what happens after MLK Day. That was one of the requests from the board is to start talking about what happens when we return. So I, we've been meeting regularly, at least once a week as an administrative team and struggling with knowing what's going to happen in almost a month. So of course, our desire is to come back in the hybrid model. However, with the cases and like Allison said, the importance of us continuing to track and monitor. Because by the time we have our next meeting, we're approximately two weeks away from returning and we really will need to know how many positive cases we have, how many people are quarantined, both staff and students, to know whether we'll have the ability to open our buildings. But that is our strong desire, especially given that we are waiting two weeks out from from the holiday break, would be to come back to hybrid. I think we do need to acknowledge and be prepared for the increase in the cases right now. And we will update you at our next meeting if we don't believe we're going to be able to open, but it's it's a fluid situation. Unfortunately, I can't predict where the cases will be in a few weeks. So our, again, intention would be to come back in the hybrid model if we have the student and staff attendance and they are able to do so.
Okay, thank you. I think I believe Amy was the one that asked to add this to the agenda. So I'm going to go ahead and see if Amy wants to kick us off.
Sure. So I guess I mean, I understand it's a fluid situation, but that's a less of a solid recommendation than I was hoping for. And I, I mean, my concern obviously is that we keep the our educational system operational and safe. But that we also continue to be able to be proactive and not reactive. So not quite sure how I feel about not making a decision today and holding up until our next meeting.
I can clarify. Our recommendation is that we come back in the hybrid model. I just felt like I needed to give a footnote with the uncertainty of what's happening and especially the fact that we're almost a month away. That was the only addition to that. But the recommendation is that we come back in the hybrid model.
Okay, thank you. That is clear. I appreciate that clarification.
Okay, others want to jump in?
So Andy, just to be clear, this is Ann. So what Patty is saying, wait until the January 5th meeting to discuss what the 15th will look like?
Yeah, I think, I don't know about discuss, but I think she's saying it'd probably be better to to actually make a motion and vote at that point just because so much could change between now and then. But is that correct, Patty? I don't want to speak for you.
Yeah, I think the last motion that stood was to be remote through MLK Day. So I think the natural assumption is that after that, we're back in the hybrid model, which is where we left off before we went remote. But I would, you know, we'll obviously give you the best update that we can when your next meeting is the fourth, I think, whatever date that is, the first Jan- first day, Tuesday in January. And then the school nurses can update the numbers and hopefully have a better handle on whether we think we're ready to go.
Thank you, Patty. So I think what the the residents are looking for is information on what the model would look like and believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was looking like we would be able to go hybrid or the teachers and the administration's looking for hybrid, depending on the numbers. Is that correct?
Yes, our recommendation is to be hybrid.
Okay, thank you. That gives the parents some information. I believe that's what they, that's what they were looking for. Thank you.
April or Jean?
This is April. Our next meeting is January the 5th and that would be two weeks from the day after MLK Day, which is January 19th. I would, I honestly would like to give parents some certainty. I think there's been a lot of uncertainty this year. But I do feel like it's prudent to wait until January 5th to make a decision on this.
Thanks, April. Jean, did you want to chime in?
I'm all set, thanks.
Okay, I'll add my two cents. I I think I agree. It sounds like we're all pretty much in agreement. I think there's too much uncertainty to vote tonight, but I think my my feeling at the moment would be that that going back to hybrid, if we can staff the buildings and and be safe, I think, makes sense. And then, you know, hopefully with the vaccine coming out, things start to slowly get better and better and we can start talking about bigger and better things. But I think that's a reasonable plan. For now, I don't have a lot to add, but I think we should plan on having a a good, robust discussion about it on the 5th. Is there anything else before we move on from anybody?
Andy, can I just make a couple of follow up thoughts?
Sure.
I am doubtful that the picture will be either any clearer or much clearer at our meeting on January 5th. And so I'm just going to be preparing myself to be ready to, you know, either make a motion or vote on a motion in acknowledging that we are just going to likely be continuing in a state of flux. You know, I don't want any of us to wait for that magic moment this year until things are totally clear. I don't think it's coming to us. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Sure. All right. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Allison, for all the information. Appreciate you being here again. And I think we can move on to 6B, which is, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, we were just going to give a little bit of an update on where we're at with our reentry. Okay?
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay. So we've been talking, our back to school plan did include some information about what a full return would look like and that it was not the recommendation at that time. We've been working, our reentry teams have been working really hard all along, continuing to look at our model and see what that might look like if we had more students in the building. So the administration has done a great job with their reentry teams in each of the buildings because our buildings are very different and they have different capacities and different class sizes. So each building took their own approach with their own reentry team. We did format it so that it's the same, so it's easier to read. The principals are going to just give you a quick overview of the types of things that are involved in their draft plans to this point. But I think it makes sense. Someone mentioned, you know, looking at what we have so far, having conversation, asking questions. Certainly, people may have ideas that we haven't thought of and and we're open to feedback. So if it's okay with you, if we could have the principals just give a really high level view of what the plans look like so far. And then at that point, we would draft or post the draft plans for both the board and the public to take a look at, if that's okay.
Yeah, I think that sounds great. Just off the top of my head, before we get started, I think, I'm sure there's a lot of interested members of the public on the line to hear this. So I'm thinking if if the board doesn't object, what I'd like to do is say something along the lines of if you have, obviously, I'm sure a lot of people will have criticisms, critiques, whatever of this plan. If you have general, you know, feelings one way or another, just email us like you normally would. But if you have a specific, if you see a specific thing in this, in the posted document and have a question about it or a recommendation or something that might work better, we're certainly open to things like that. So maybe, maybe just if we could, if if you have specific suggestions and you email the board, put in the subject line reopening suggestion or something like that. So, you know, we can sort them out. That would be really helpful because I think we're, we're open to all kinds of input on this thing, right, Patty? Okay. Then I think do you want to go through the administrators or are you reading it?
Yep, no, I was just going to mention that we have three columns in the plan. So we took a look at what it looks like if we need to maintain six feet of social distancing, what it would look like with three feet of social distancing, and then what it might look like if we no longer need it to social distance. So we tried to divide it into three categories to to give a picture of what all three scenarios would look like in the buildings. So I will let maybe Dr. Parks, do you want to start with PA?
Andy, this is Ann. Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
I know this is a draft. Do you know when it will be in the school board drive? You said after, does it tonight that we'll get a draft of it?
Yep, I'll work on it as soon as I can. I'm not sure what Kathy's workload looks like tomorrow, but we'll do it as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, so as Patty mentioned, we have those three columns, six feet with everyone in the building, three feet social distancing with everyone in the building and no social distancing. And the caveat for all of these is, you know, what is the risk tolerance for the Pembroke School District? I will tell you that when we have to perform contact tracing, the
I will tell you that when we have to perform contact tracing, the threshold that DHHS always talks to us about is six feet uh for, within six feet for 10 minutes. Uh, so that's just consistent language that they've always asked us about when we have to talk to them. Um, the areas that each school focuses on are transportation, grade-level classrooms, life studies, music classrooms. I think some schools may use unified arts as a term for that, uh cafeteria, uh parking. We have more students parking here than the other schools, I would imagine. Uh, hallways, uh morning screenings, locker rooms, bathrooms, uh cleaning protocols, and then health office and para coverage. And uh there are costs associated with some of these. Uh, particularly when we're looking at, you know, like, let's say, three feet social distancing, you know, in some of those or six feet social distancing. In some of these cases, we have tables, uh and uh we would need to store those tables and purchase desks. Uh, that allows a little bit more flexibility. Uh, and, you know, so we have priced out what storage units would look like for that, because we would have to store some things out of classrooms in order to create the space to facilitate social distancing in classrooms. Um, you know, another component to this would be um Plexiglas, when we're talking about the cafeteria. Uh, right now at Pembroke Academy, when, when students are in the building, we have two students per table. It's kind of like an awkward speed dating scenario. And uh in order for us to facilitate having more students at each table, we would have to have Plexiglas dividers. And that's really a a pretty vulnerable time, because obviously students need to have their masks off to eat. And uh, you know, when you have more students around those tables, that you need to have more barriers to help keep everyone safe. Uh, and as you can imagine, Plexiglas is at a premium, so those costs are pretty, pretty high. Um, and then we get into um additional support in our health office, uh because just, you know, just like um with hybrid, you know, we have obviously COVID-related items that need to happen with our health office. Uh, in, in addition to that, we have regular health uh situations that occur in any, in any public school. And when you uh increase the student size, when you double that, you're going to increase the demand on that health office. Uh, and that's a challenge, particularly when, you know, we have um quarantine and sickness that, you know, the people in our health officer is susceptible to as anyone else. So that's just another consideration that we have to work around. Um, yeah, I will just tell you, you know, we've worked on some maternity issues and, and trying to find people for coverage, and it is really hard out there to find people. Uh, so even if, you know, there are funds available and we have, you know, the green light to hire teachers, it's the, the market is really dry. Uh, and so that becomes pretty challenging. Uh, but that's kind of a cursory overview of what's going on at Pembroke Academy.
Thanks. Um, do you want to go to TRS?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, we're, we're not unlike um PA in many of those categories. Now, the one thing that we do uh have concern over that, that they don't particularly, they have parking issues, we got busing issues. Um, so we still only have four drivers, uh maybe five, depending on if it's morning or afternoon. We're looking at either doubling or tripling the runs, and they probably would be staggered. So um that, it, that's just everybody's in. Um, that is, I don't know if that's doable, to be honest with you, but uh that would be, that would be quite a challenge. That's assuming if they're six feet apart or it's, or three feet apart. Um, we have all the other same type of issues, our core classes, some grade levels we could uh squeeze by. Others would have to have overflow in other classes where uh one class would be have the teacher and they'd have to broadcast into another room. If that other room was available, that also would mean we would have to have um another staff in that room to support the kids that are in the overflow. And, you know, all the other things are, are not unlike what Dan said. Um, our hallways, uh, we, we cannot do social distancing now. Uh, that would be a lot worse. I think the biggest concern I have going all in, which uh would be contact tracing. Uh, we have really, at this point, uh when we've had situations, whether whether it's just staff alone or if it's students, uh, we have been able to frankly stay open uh and functional, because uh we've been six feet apart. That is really uh as Dan has said, the state always asks, are you six feet apart, uh, wearing masks? Uh, and that has saved us a number of times already. We have locker rooms, we're not, we wouldn't be using those. Uh, bathrooms would also be a concern. We're trying to limit three at a time in a bathroom. If we have everybody back, uh, that obviously would be uh pretty interesting to see long lines outside of the bathrooms. I think without, without uh going through uh all the things that Dan did, I would say transportation is our biggest difference. And that, that would be challenging. We also uh kind of like Dan, we have, we have nine classrooms that have tables, and that's not conducive to uh social distancing. So we would have to potentially uh not recommend it, but it would, uh, we'd have to replace those nine classrooms. The document, I put down some numbers of a basic idea of what that would look like. We also would have to have storage uh outside. Um, and then my other concern is if we bought all this, first of all, if we could even get the furniture, then we buy it, what do we do with it once COVID is over? We'd have like a ton of furniture just hanging out. Um, so that's, you know, a lot of things we have to think about uh if we're gonna come all back in in six feet. Uh, three feet's a little bit easier, uh particularly in some grade levels, uh and not as, not as detailed as that uh or as concerning, but it's still would have some cost. Uh, all in, obviously, it's the same thing as how much risk we want to put the schools at. I can tell you right now that if we were uh even hybrid, uh I probably would have had to cancel school uh last Friday and today. And I'm not sure, I don't even dare to think of what tomorrow looks like. So um I also need to uh let everybody know that uh all staff has told me they want everybody back as soon as we can uh safely.
Thanks, John. Um, let's hear from the Hill School and then we'll do questions.
Um, so Dan and John have covered quite a bit of it. I'm just gonna kind of touch on the points that um are a little bit more unique to Hill. Um, transportation, like John said, is a huge concern for us. When we really look at it, it's a double, if not a triple run. So that goes us back to our staggered start times. And then for us, it's definitely a concern of um finding staffing available to watch uh and supervise safely and following social distancing guidelines, a huge uh portion of our population in the morning and in the afternoon. Um, so in the document, I've placed those, those um numbers as well for you guys to take a look at when you got, when they are published. Um, classrooms, it's another thing, uh elementary. We know we have a lot of stuff. I get that all the time from everybody. Um, and in order to make a lot of room, you know, we have classroom libraries and the teachers do an amazing job creating these wonderful learning environments for the kids. And we would have to clear out uh potentially the majority of the classrooms to make room for the desks. So that's um just to get the desks in there. And then similar to what John said, we, over the past several years, you know, you really look at trading out individual desks for tables, because collaboration is the name of the game now. And that's not conducive to social distancing, or even, you know, CDC guidelines recommend that they're all facing forward. So purchasing desks and things like that is also a concern for um, for us. Um, cafeteria, not as much for us. We would still continue to eat in um our, our classrooms. Um, it is that one-touch point that I guess makes everybody a little bit more nervous, because masks are off during that time. Um, so you can imagine being in a room with um, you know, 15 to 16 students with their masks off um at less than three feet for about 30 minutes. Um, kind of that would be the picture of, of what would happen at three feet and, and six feet would be a little bit different. Um, another concern for us was particularly at Hill School was our recess. Um, we've done a, a great job right now of staggering them out into what we uh call zones. So they have all these zones and they rotate their zones as they're out there. Um, we would be doubling um our population out there and social distancing would not be maintained. Would, it would be very, very difficult, if not near impossible. Um, you try really hard to keep the kiddos when they're out there, but they want to play and they're all over the place. Um, so that's a concern for us, too. We would need to increase the number of personnel that are out there. And right now, it's, it's a very, very delicate balance of trying to cover all the duties and um, you know, i- it's double the amount of duties that we have to cover or the different, the lunches and recesses. Um, so that would be one. The other thing for us is um some of our staffing needs. Um, you know, we, being able to provide a remote uh continue our remote instruction at this time would definitely be taxed. Um, you know, we were able to kind of m- make some adjustments to our staffing currently so that we can provide that remote. We'd have to hire a few short-term substitutes to take over the remote positions to allow teachers to go back into the um, you know, some roles. Or, or, for example, fourth grade has a larger enrollment, so we'd have to do some shuffling around to make sure that um they were safely kind of spread out. So overall, those are the things that are a little bit more unique to Hill. Um, but i- it's pretty much the same picture. Um, and we have um all those, you know, detail, a little bit more detail, and then with numbers and stuff as well.
All right. Thank you all. Um, I'm looking forward to reading through those. I'll open it up to the board, see if there are questions for our administrators.
Uh, Andy, this is Ann. Um, can we just have a list of the items that they're looking at? And I do understand everyone is busy, but to follow a draft that we don't have a copy of um is kind of difficult. So I may not have written them as quickly as Mr. Morris told us. Do you mind going through those again?
Um, and, you know, we planned on giving just a really high-level view, so I didn't want you to have to write anything down. Um, we will get it right away, so you don't have to wait.
Okay. I'm just looking at just like 11 different categories that they're looking at. Is that correct?
Just looking close uh quickly, but it's approximately right.
All right, thank you.
We'll get it in your hands right away. You don't have to scramble to write. I didn't want you to have to do that.
Thank you.
Amy, looks like you're unmuted.
Yeah, thank you. Um. I'm looking for the diplomatic way of saying this. Uh, I felt that the guidance from the state provided lots of choices, but lacked specific guidance. And I'm wondering, or I'm worrying, that what you're talking about putting together might share that same quality? Can you just clarify a little bit? Um, you know, I understand there's like the three different scenarios, the no distance, the three-foot distance, the six-foot distance, but is it gonna come with any sort of like, you know, is Dr. Morris gonna say like, okay, so considering all of this at Pembroke Academy, this is what I think should happen? Or, you know, Superintendent Sherman is gonna say like, okay, I have all this information from the principals and this is my recommendation. Does it, is that a clear question?
Uh, I mean, I can, I don't recommend this at all. Um, and, you know, I want to be clear about that. I don't think full in is a good idea. Um, I think it impairs our flexibility to uh provide full remote instruction and hybrid. We can't be all things to all people and um, it's a safety issue, frankly. Um, so I actually have that. When you see this, you'll see at the top, Pembroke Academy Administration does not recommend a full-in model at this time. Uh, with the date, I, I think it's the 10th.
Can I ask a follow-up without giving any of the other principals the opportunity to comment? Um, is there any information about like, um, but here's some of our thought process about when this might make sense?
Um, I, it's ta- it's hard. You know, I, I was saying to someone earlier today, there's a difference between what I want and what I'm recommending. And the reason is that what I recommend is rooted in reality. Uh, what I want is for everyone to be back in the building. No one, you know, no one wants this right now. Um, but I can't predict when that's going to be. Uh, con- conditions are, as I think everyone has said, very fluid. Um, I, I can identify what the trend is right now, and I don't like what I'm seeing. Um, but in no way can I, you know, it's, it's kind of the case of why the state took, you know, so long to put out their document this summer, which came out in late July. Uh, and why, you know, then schools were scrambling to put together reopening plans. It's not a static environment. It's a dynamic environment. And so, you know, proactive planning can be done to a certain extent, but with really no commitment, because it's such a fluid situation. So I'm sorry for the non-answer, but that's, that's where I'm at.
That's helpful. Thank you.
I think if anything, from my point of view, this, this gives me, well, I need to see more of it first, but it sounds like it will give me good information to help make the decision as to when I'm comfortable to vote to open the schools, because I will have a better picture of what does six feet look like? What does three feet look like? What does no distancing look like? Um, and in not just, I mean, in my mind, mostly health and safety related. Um, but secondarily, what that looks like budget-wise, too. It sounds, I mean, I had, I had always had in my head, you know, if we try to do this, there's gonna be some costs involved, especially if we do try to keep that remote option open. Um, but some of the stuff that you guys mentioned today were not even things that were on my radar. So I think it's gonna be helpful for me to be able to kind of say, um, you know, kind of put a, a price tag on it, if you will. So I thank everybody for their work on this and, and I'm sure it's not finished. Um, but like I said before, I'm looking forward to reading through it. Other questions, comments?
I think, you know, it's not, it's not finished. It's a draft. And I think it was important to all of us. People have been wondering, you know, what are you thinking about a full return? And, and we felt like it was important to get our initial thoughts and our initial assessments out there. But to Amy's point, um, you know, we're in the, we're in the six-foot column right now. Like Dan said, everything that um DHHS is recommending and the questions they're asking for contact tracing is six feet. And when I look at the list of what it would take for us to maintain six feet with everyone in the building, it's, it's extremely overwhelming and, and probably impossible. So if that's the guidance that we're looking at right now, we would not be recommending a full return.
Anybody else before we move on? Okay. Well, thanks again, everybody. Appreciate that information. Um, we'll move on to Agenda Item 6B, which is an update on the current year's budget. Um, Amber, are you with us?
I am. Um, so the currently, right now, I ran it actually today, and it did go up, actually. The surplus went up as of today. Um, and it includes the transportation credits um have been entered in the system. Are up to um 1,402,220. Mind to be um fluid through the next several months. Um, I'm not sure um how many outstanding special ed invoices that haven't, um, we haven't received. We're still working through those. Um, but the transportation is up to date through November.
Hey, Amber, I think earlier, did you tell me it was 1,400,000?
Yeah, isn't that what I said?
No, you said 1,400,000.
Oh, no, it's 1,4220. I apologize.
Thanks, Patty. Um, thanks, Amber. Uh, do we have questions for Amber on current year?
Uh, Andy, this is Ann, and I apologize, Amber. What is the amount that we are putting into um the reserves? Is it 82,000?
82,500.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Others? Um, I'll ask a question now, and I guess if anybody bored Amber, Patty would rather I wait until the next bullet item with next year's budget, let me know. Um, but being that the surplus, obviously fluid, but looks healthy, um, we talked a little bit last time. The schools had a punch list of about $118,000 worth of stuff that they would like to buy this year if, if Patty were to unfreeze the budget. Um, I know it's still early, and I guess, Amber, I, I looked you for maybe a suggestion of timing and when, when you think this surplus is stable enough to do that, but I certainly think that it would be a good idea to spend that money and get those things taken care of. That would also lower our budget number for next year that we're gonna bring to the taxpayers in March, um, and probably get it down pretty close to just 2% flat, which would be great. Um, Do you think it's still too early to, to have that conversation, Amber?
No, I don't necessarily think it's too early. I think that in the, some of the lines that I'm seeing surplus in, there are some lines that shouldn't change. So I think that it is worth having a discussion in regards to that. I wouldn't go much more than that at this point. But I think that it would be worth having a conversation about it.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Andy, this is Ann. Do we still have that list of items?
Let me see if I can, if I'm not sure if it's in this, this drive or last drive.
Because I think if we're looking at items to, to, you know, to bring in, if we're not using the building yet, I don't see that it's prudent to purchase items that, you know, we're not looking to be using. I just wasn't sure where that list was.
Yep, it's in the, it's in the drive for the 12-1 meeting and it is titled, oh, I think this is the one that Dan named. District redundant budget request due to budget freeze sheet 1.pdf.
Thank you. And it's 12-1, you said? Thank you.
So I guess we can, if we want to discuss that more, we can put it off because we're going to have a lot of discussion under the next bullet item anyway. I didn't mean to sidetrack us. Are there any more questions for Amber for current year budget? Okay, then we'll move on to 6C, which is the 2022 or 2021, 2022 budget discussion. We'll get an update from Amber first.
Sure. I did put a new packet in your, in the drive. Not many changes. The only change that actually was made from the last meeting was in regards to the increases that you loaded on. Those can be found on page 22 and 23 of the packet and they can be found on line 1608 through 1620. Other than that, no other changes were made.
Andy, this is Ann. I just had a question in this packet that Amber provided. Where is the listing of the revenues for this budget?
I did not add them to this packet again, but they were in the packet from the previous.
So that's the 12-1?
Yes.
Okay. So what I was looking for, because I know what we're saying here is a 2.5% increase. But what I was looking for is the amount of the budget plus the warrant articles minus our review, our revenue.
I didn't, I haven't added anything on the warrant articles yet because they haven't been decided by the school board.
So what's the, I know that you discussed at our last meeting that our revenues were going to be down. We know that amount?
Yes. So the revenue will be down about 342,690.
Okay. So have we, have we taken that amount out of our budget? That we're, we're down in revenues?
Asking, have you reduced the budget by 342,000 to, to make it net out?
Correct. Because if our revenues are down 300,000, did we take that out of the operating budget that's being presented?
We have not, but I'm not sure that I would recommend that because these are estimated revenue figures. They get updated in, you know, September, October timeframe during tax rate next year.
Okay.
We could potentially get additional Medicaid, could potentially get more CATAID. I mean, we won't know that till next year really starts. I mean, there are some, there are some areas that are a little fluid, but I can only go off of what we currently have available for information to us.
Correct. But I was just asking, you know, for our, our tax sheet that we have every March. It does have the, the budget plus the warrant articles and then we, we do, we have, you know, we minus out the revenue. So I was just looking to see if we had anywhere idea what that might be.
Sorry.
I don't know if it's mine or, or it's you, but there was cutting out, so I only got some of that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just looking at the, the tax rate sheet that we get every March. So I'm just looking to see the amount of the revenue that we're down. And I believe on December 1st, it might be page 46 that tells us the revenue. Sorry, that was the tax rate.
Yes, page 44. That's the revenue, the estimated revenue sheet, and you can find the tax for, on page 46.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Please note that when you look at the estimated revenue sheet, it looks like we're short $1.1 million. Or not. It takes into consideration the large surplus that was turned back. It also takes into consideration warrant articles that took place.
Now, did we have a reduction from state aid?
We had a reduction in adequacy aid and that is because we had this one-time increase that had to do with free and reduced lunch and disparity. And that, you know, one time for this current biennium that carry forward to the next biennium, which be, would be the 21, 22, 22, 23. So every district I hit really hard with that. We did, we were fortunate enough last year and this current year to be able to receive some additional aid, but that additional aid does not carry forward. When you look at page 44, I do break that out for you on the first three lines. So you can clearly see what we had and what we will have moving forward.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Amber?
Andy, this is April. I was hoping we could find out more about, since New Hampshire has a biennium budget, we don't know what the budget will be for the year that we're now discussing the budget. So kind of talk about how does Amber or the business administrator come up with the prediction of what those aids are going to be when there's no state budget set yet? Thank you.
In regards to revenue, are you asking, April? I'm sorry.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, I said, yes, that's correct.
Okay. So I do receive documentation from the Department of Ed. So that's where I receive my adequacy aid numbers. Okay. And so any other information that I'm looking at, we look at our current population when it comes to Medicaid or CATAID. And then as well as we look at our population, obviously for tuition. So we do have some information, just some of that information is fluid because it is dependent on specific needs for those students that we have. Could potentially change or we could have somebody move out or somebody move in. As well as enrollment, obviously, we're looking at a pretty large time span between now and technically it would be till the end of the following June.
Thank you. So it sounds like the Department of Ed sends out communications with estimates so that you can forecast.
Yes.
Did I understand that? Okay. I'm just looking to avoid, you know, a couple of years ago, the district and the school board went through what was determined to be a revenue shortfall. So, you know, I don't know if you could take a moment to speak about how things have changed to avoid that in the future? Thank you.
Well, in regard, in regards to the revenue shortfall for the state, I'm not sure anything has changed there. There was a change in revenue stream that really we had no control over. In regards to enrollment, there was a huge dip of enrollment that year that we could not foresee. Why that happened that year? I'm not sure. We estimated, or I estimated like we normally would. But with that said, since then, I do use a lot more analytical, a more analytical process. And so I put some tools in place back then that have now been carried forward that allow me to look at current data, look at past data to get a best, better estimation at where I think we will arrive at the end. And I think that tool so far has proven to really work because it was a tool that I used last year. And I, as Ann had stated, Pembroke Academy number hit right on the money. It was probably slightly a fluke, but I think a lot of it has to do with I really pay attention to everything that's going on. And I really take, and I really put a lot of thought process in how many students are coming and going. There's a lot of fluid pieces, but there's a lot of information at the same time. And so I really take a look at where we were, where I think we're going to be. And I look at it not just as in today and tomorrow, but through that 14, 15, 16, 17 month time span and what type of fluctuations been happening from year to year. So there is data to use and that's what I'm doing to estimate my figures.
Thank you very much for taking time to explain that. I do have one other question about revenue. I know a while back, we heard that there was some hiccups in billing for Medicaid services. Has that been resolved or is that an ongoing issue at this point? Is there any updates to that? That may be more of a question for our superintendent. I'm not sure. But I haven't heard recently how that's going. Thank you.
We have Assistant Superintendent Gersha with us who oversees Education Department, so I can ask her to update you first, okay?
Hi, everyone. At this point, all the revenue for Medicaid is back up and running according to the new rules that were implemented by the Department of Health and Human Services in the state last spring. So last year, we were not able to bill for Medicaid at the usual approvals that we had because they revoked the privileges of signing the orders for those services. And so we weren't able to bill. In the spring, they allowed school psychologists to perform those orders as well as speech and language pathologists who can now order Medicaid billable services. So we have folks entering. I have actually a meeting with our representatives from the main state building, the folks that handle our billing service for us. I have a meeting with them tomorrow to review what is on tap and what is being readied for release and checks to come our way. So I'll know better after that meeting where we're at. But I do know that we will be experiencing a significant uptick from last year. That being said, it won't go back to the levels that it was previously, mainly because the change in the rules in the state, which makes it more difficult to bill for some of the Medicaid billable services such as transportation, occupational therapy. Guidance counselors are no longer able to bill for counseling services and a number of other things that are now constrained under the new laws and will. So we are, we have folks submitting for their time and logging their time and approving time. So I expect that we will have a better picture of that in the next couple of months.
Thank you. I just have a follow-up question. When the review is done of what happened and it was a loss revenue, one of the things that an outside consultant advised the school board at that time is there was loss of billings for Medicare, excuse me, Medicaid services. What has happened since that time to make sure that the district's not missing billings and therefore not missing revenue?
So we were, we had, the way it's logged is one of the issues, was one of the issues in the past. And the folks that were supervising that, this was several years ago, I think, is what you're talking about, Ms. Bellani. That has been rectified. We were able to do that several years ago. But there is a process where those, those times, services that are logged are reviewed. And then our folks that help us with that at the, at the company, at the vendor that provides that service reviews that periodically with us. So we're able to look at those reports and that's what we're going to be looking at tomorrow.
Fantastic. So we'll hear more about that from you in the future.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Gersha.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
Hi, Andy. This is Ann. I have to ask Amber, the percentage that you used for tuition for PA, what percent was that for last year? And are you using the same number for this year?
Last year, I think was 93%. And this year, I believe I'm using 91%.
Ann, did you mean the percent of enrollment or the percent of the district, the Pembroke share of the SAU cost?
The, the percent of future guessing of the enrollment for PA.
Sorry, my bad.
Yeah, I last year I did 93, I believe, and this year I'm doing 92. Or 90, yeah.
I know the budget committee is always asked, so I just wanted to.
It's close. It's between, yeah, it was 90, I believe it was 92. So it's, it's close, but you have to look at, it's not just about saying 92% of this. You also have to look at what that number represents. So if I were to say 90% instead of 92%, that could be, you know, 10 kids, 10 additional kids not being there. So I really use reasonableness, you know, when I'm looking at the percentages.
Yes. Thank you. Andy, I did have a question on the Pembroke Academy High School tuition fiscal year 21, 22 projection. And I wanted to find out, I'm not sure where these numbers come from. Is that a form that you have available, Amber?
I'm sorry, which form are you asking about?
Pembroke Academy projection sheet. Where it has all these numbers on here. What they're, how we just, how we determine the tuition rate?
Yes, that was included in your packet last week in the high school tuition enrollment section on page 41.
Yes. The question I have is transportation for Pembroke Academy for bus transportation. I assume the majority of that is for CRTC. And I wanted to find out where that shows for the cost of the sending towns in this tuition rate.
It's not, it's not broken out. It would be in that full amount at the top of what we're estimating the ending overall academy budget to be. It's not, I don't subtract that from the equation because potentially those students could be partaking in that program.
Correct.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes, yes. I didn't see that on here. So I just wondered if that cost is added into the, the sending students also.
It is.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. My internet seems to be a little weird, so hopefully I don't drop. If you lose me, somebody text me. We, so the next time that we meet is January 5th. January 7th is when Patty and Amber and myself need to present this to the municipal budget committee. So to get them the packets that they need to be able to review this information by that time, we need to take action on this budget tonight. I want to be very clear that that does not mean that we can't modify these numbers in the future. But we do need to vote to, on a bottom line here, to send this over to them so that it's ready for them at our meeting time. So I guess if we, if we can, if anybody has any questions about specific lines or dollars, dollar amounts, we can get into some of that nitty-gritty, but sooner or later, we're going to have to make a motion on this, one way or the other.
Andy, this is Ann. 377, new equipment for science. So we voted on 58,200 for the fiscal year 2021. I assume some of these items haven't been purchased yet. They're probably on that list to be purchased. They're probably on that list to be purchased.
That's page seven, if those of you are following along.
Oh, sorry about that.
Nope, that's okay.
I'm using your handy dandy Excel spreadsheet, which is gold. Thank you, Amber, very much. Absolute gold. So 377, so if those the items that probably have not been purchased and that will be on the list to purchase?
Dan is shaking his head yes.
That's correct.
Okay. So if we purchase those items with the surplus we have now, do we need an additional 52,000 for this budget here for 21, 22?
I don't know if it, if it would be the entire amount, but if we were to purchase it this year, we would not need to purchase it again for next year. So that would be a savings from next year's budget.
Okay.
Other questions?
Andy, this is Ann. I do have another question. It's been brought to me by many residents. And the surpluses that we have every year is quite high. And Amber did supply that to us a few times in our packets. So if the history of the surplus is quite high, residents are asking if we can lower the surplus amount or lower that budget by some of these surplus amounts. Because yes, we do give a surplus back, but the residents are still taxed on that throughout the year. So that's, that's a big question I wanted to have the public understand this evening.
Can I speak to that? May I? The thing I just think we should take into consideration is the last couple of years, we have frozen the budget. So because of that, that plays a large role at the end of the year. So I just think that that is worthy of having some consideration as well, as well as in the spring. Due to COVID, you know, we may have not have spent all of our dollars that we typically would have because of that as well. So there were some variables played in the last couple of years. So I just wanted to give some thought to that.
Yes, but in the, in the previous years, there is 100,000 or 600,000 even after we put the money into surplus. So that, that's just what they're questioning. It's not just in the last couple of years. You know, last year we did have 600,000, the year before it was a million, the year before that it was a million. And then if we look further back, there was one year it was only 36,000, but it has been over 600,000 to a million that has been returned to the taxpayers. So they're just asking if we have that much in surplus each year, is there a way to reduce the budget so we don't get taxed on that even though we're going to get a surplus later on?
Right, I think a couple of things that come to mind off the top of my head, Ann, that people should understand is, one, obviously there's some huge variability, especially in, especially in the special ed arena. Individual children that may, or students that move into the district could have hundreds of thousands of dollars of need just for one child or one family. So we have to keep some sort of buffer there. And then I guess buffer is the other part, right? We, we can't cut it close enough. I guess if we have extra money at the end of the year, that gets returned to the taxpayers and basically lowers their tax burden for the following year. But if we come up short, then it's a, it's a bad situation. We need to have a special town meeting to ask them for more money and then it messes with their tax rate even more. And that's a situation where they're, like in other words, their escrow account gets messed up because it bounces up and down and the mortgage companies are months behind on that. And so if we, in my personal feeling is we safeguard against the, even the remote possibility of falling short because that causes a very large headache in, in getting things right again.
Correct. Yeah, I just wanted that to be made public because that was a lot of questions that I have. And I'm just trying to figure out, you know, the 2.5 increase is not really going to be 2.5 because we don't know the difference between that and the revenue. Is that correct?
Well, not just that, I mean, you don't know at the end of the year where we're going to be. So one, the valuation plays a role in the taxes as well as whatever is returned at the end of the year for surplus is going to take, is also going to play a role in that. So right now, this is an estimation based off of the information that we currently have.
Correct, okay.
It also looks like a larger increase, you know, if you, when you look at the tax rate sheet because, you know, it's, it's great when we're able to give money back to offset the taxes, but it does create that, you know, that staggering increase or decrease, I should say, in the tax rate that makes it look like we've increased the budget significantly. In fact, we haven't. It's because there's been money returned or the valuation was higher or lower than anticipated.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point. And I think it is good to point out a couple of these things because I don't think everybody in the community understands. But yeah, it's definitely a balancing act. We certainly don't want to have, you know, a million dollars laying around every year. But the past four or five years in town have been interesting, to say the least. And, you know, some things have, have happened and some overcorrections have happened, at least in my opinion. And it's made tax bills really such a moving target. I'm hoping that we're at a point now, we had, obviously we had a big increase last year. But even that, if you remember, if, speaking to the public now, if you remember at, at the school district meeting, the increase was going to, was slated on the tax rate paper to be, I'll get this wrong, so please don't quote me, but it was an enormous number. It was like over 10%. It may have been 11 and a quarter or something like that. But after all the little pieces that Amber mentioned and looking at the tax bills, the increase actually ended up, I think, being somewhere around 9%, which is still huge, don't get me wrong. But that number is an estimate at this point. And if we have, if we maintain a surplus, then it, it does nothing but help that. So it is a very awkward thing, especially with the timing. The town is on a, a regular annual cycle where we're on a fiscal year calendar that goes from July to June. And yeah, it makes the whole thing way more complicated than I think it needs, needs to be. But I don't have any good ideas how to fix it.
Right, but just to understand that, yes, they do get a surplus back, but they are still taxed on that money as a higher, you know, the higher rate. Yes, they do get a surplus back, but they're still taxed at a higher rate throughout the year. So we, we voted in a 12% increase. So we were taxed on, on that amount, but we did get a surplus back. So I just wanted to have it public because many residents are not understanding it. So thank you, Andy.
Yep.
Andy, this is April. I heard that you bring up special education and that's why we need a buffer. You know, special education is not the only reason. Children with disabilities do have a right to a free, appropriate public education. That's not the bucket that we just dump money into. That's why we have a trust. That's not why we pad our budget. That is why we have a trust, so if that scenario should come up. So I think there's a difference between padding a budget for special education versus having a trust. And I just would like to make some clarity on that.
Sure. And of course, that was just one example. There's many, many reasons that we don't want to cut it really close. Other questions on any line items on the bottom line itself?
Andy, this is Ann. I do have another question on page seven, number 346. And that was a line that in 1920, we actually used 69,000. We voted in 75. But for 2021, it was 123,000. And then for the next year, we're asking 132,000. So what are those items that we're purchasing next year for 132,000?
The description is actually listed right below that line, Ann, what they're looking to purchase.
So that does not tell me what, so, so line 30, 347 to 352, those are the items that are to be purchased for 132? And it doesn't tell me what we purchased for 123?
Well, if you look back at the budget from last year, we would have had the same type of decision.
Okay.
We always break it out year to year.
Excellent. Thank you.
Andy, this is April. This is probably going to be addressed later when the ARE committee report comes to light. But one thing that was talked at the, that was spoken about at the recent meeting is the recommendation by the attorney for each school district to obtain their own legal counsel in regard to the AREA. There's discussion about, is the current AREA agreement even binding at this point? Pembroke School District has a lot to lose as far as revenue source. If it's not binding and other districts decide to send their children elsewhere, I think it would be smart for us to budget funds for legal counsel in order to, for us to obtain our own legal counsel to investigate that on behalf of Pembroke School District. We have a lot of our revenue wrapped up in the sending districts. Thank you.
Andy, this is Ann again, a question on the budget. Do we have any recommendation on some of the items that we can take out of this budget and take out of our capital reserves to lower the budget number? I'm just afraid that come March, we're going to have a battle to get this passed.
Patty, do you have any, anything, you know, Josh has anything that we could use trust money for this year?
My only concern at this point is to start digging into this, it's not going to be ready for the MBC. So we need to put the binders together for next week. So if that's something that you want us to pursue, it, we can't do that on the fly. Like we would have to have a meeting with the administrators and Josh to go through and identify some of those areas that, that Ann's asking about if we could move into a trust. So I don't think that we could just do that on the fly.
So basically, I just want to be sure. So what we're looking at now is either a yes or no on this bottom line. Is that correct? And we're not looking at move items here or there?
So we do need a bottom line to, yes, tonight, if we're going to get it to the MBC on time. I think what Andy was trying to say in the beginning, though, is there, there have been times when we've gone back to the MBC and said, oh, we had a subsequent board meeting and we decided to do X, Y, and Z, and we're bringing you a different bottom line. And that's okay to do. So for instance, if you decide that you want to take those 100 and whatever cuts from this year, we could, you know, buy those items now and then cut that amount of, out of the budget next year. And then we can do that work, Ann, if that's what the board wants and find some things that we could take potentially out of our trust funds. We could do all the work, even if we send it to the MBC.
Okay. So I guess my, my question's to Andy. So at the last March meeting, the, the school board had made a recommendation to the budget committee. The budget committee came back and said no. But then what happened is when we got to the meeting that morning, there was a totally different amount from the school board. So how does that happen?
Patty, do you remember there was, I believe what it was, Ann, was, you know, because there was concern, because it was such a, a large number, we worked right up until the last possible moment. And Josh, I think it was mostly Josh Coughlin, was able to find, I think it was around $800,000 that I don't know, I don't remember honestly if he, if he was able to push them to the next year or, or what happened. But we, so we, we do have the flexibility to work on, and I think we even printed off a separate sheet to explain that to the public, like what, how we saved that little bit of extra money at the end. $800,000 sounds like a lot, but in a $25 million budget, it's not huge, but every dollar counts. So I think, I think that's kind of what I was trying to get at before is we have to vote on this and get it over to them. But there, it is, well, I guess I would say we, we certainly wouldn't want to make arbitrary changes after that. But we can continue to work and finesse and, and put a fine point on it to say, okay, we, you know, we decided we can unfreeze the budget this year to purchase these things. So next year's budget number is going to go down. I'm, I'm trying to say, trying to say this in a way that, you know, I, we, we can't drag this process out right up until February, obviously. But if we have pointed things that we want to accomplish in our next meeting or two, I think we have the flexibility to still do that even after we've passed this to MBC. And if we decide to do that, and if you have a suggestion to do that, and I think I will want to talk about that 118, maybe at our next meeting too, I will, I can certainly let the budget committee know that that's a thing that we're talking about and that we might have an adjustment coming. It's just what we need to do tonight is make sure that we're not, not discussing, you know, line 1122 or what, you know, little specific things anymore. But if we have some big tarts of, do we want to spend that 118 or not? Can we pull some things out of trust or not? Those are things that we can still discuss. And, and I think personally, my intent would be, you know, anything that we discuss after tonight should be with the, of making next year's number lower. I come at this to say, we're sending this over to the budget committee in, in, in my mind at least, where this is kind of, we're not going to go over this, do you know what I mean? And I don't think that's, I don't want that to, there's not an RSA that says that, that's not a legal thing. That's just where I'm coming from. Like we, we need to vote on this and get it over to them. And my intention going forward, any changes that we would make would be reductions, not additions, unless something catastrophic were to happen.
So, but we should be looking at reductions before we send this off? Or are we just going to say, yes, this is okay and not discuss it again next week, uh, next meeting, January 4th?
We wouldn't be discussing minor items. That's, that's what we have been supposed to be doing for the past month. So again, we could, you know, if we've got a plan to try to address some trust funds or things like that, we can do that, but going line by line and trying to, you know, save a thousand here, a thousand there, or add a thousand here, a thousand there is, that's the point that we need to be passed tonight. I guess is the best way to say it.
Okay. So when the budget committee recommends, because they always do, they say, okay, well, we want this budget cut by 600,000. Where at this point is the school board's task to find it or is it the administration?
And typically, we would, I would let Patty know that that was the ask. And I think she had usually said to the administrators, hey, you know, this is what they're asking. And if it's been a, a large gap like it was last year, the administrators have come back to us with, I, I hate to say this and I'll use the wrong term, but basically a prioritized list. And the recommendation here was, we really can't go without this stuff. If we could go without it, it would, you know, it wouldn't have been in the budget to begin with. But if you absolutely have to do things, here are the things that we would recommend, you know, in somewhat of an order. So I think that was an administrative task last year. Is that, is that, did I explain that well, Patty?
Yeah, it didn't come from the MBC, though. So the MBC goes to Andy and then comes back to the board and then the board would decide. So if the budget committee said, hey, we would be happy if this was 600,000 less, then the board would need to take action on that and decide whether or not the administration needed to find some cuts and how much you would want us, you know, come back and recommend for you.
Okay. Excellent. I just want, and I appreciate it Patty and Andy. I just wanted the public to understand that we are going through this line by line and we are looking for items because, you know, the transparency is the word that they're always saying. So I appreciate you, Andy and Patty, for both addressing that.
Andy, this is Amy.
Go ahead, Amy.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget.
Patty, should we attach the, the dollar amount at the end to this or is that an okay motion?
No, the dollar amount needs to be in your motion and then you also need to be voting on warrant articles too.
Do we have to do the warrant article in the same motion?
No. Oops, sorry.
Not, not all of them. Okay. So I, Amber, let me make sure I'm getting the right number here. I'm looking at page 23, bottom line in the red area, total district appropriation, Is that the number that should be in that motion?
That is correct.
Okay, that's my motion.
Okay. Is there a second to approve 27,927,534?
I will make a second only for conversation, but I wouldn't be able to vote on that high amount.
Correct.
But I'll take a second so we can break it forward.
All right, that's Ann. So discussion, I think maybe we should each hit this one. Amy, it's your motion, if you want to go first.
Sure, I understand we need to fine tune this and that the. Sure, I understand we need to fine tune this and that the budget is subject to further process, but I am comfortable with where it is at right now and ready to move forward with it.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, I just got a text from Jean saying you guys can't hear me. So, uh, let me, maybe we'll get April or Anne to chime in and give Jean a second to sort himself out.
Yeah, this is Anne. I wouldn't be able to, um, vote yes on this motion only because I'm just concerned trying to get this amount passed, um, at, at the March meetings. I'm very concerned about that amount. Thank you.
I do not support this amount based on how things have gone over the past almost a year now. I know that a lot of our parents felt like they're left holding the bag, educating their children. And I would like to see a flat line budget instead of the increase that's proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean, can we hear you yet? You look unmuted.
Do we have a chat box? Maybe he could write in?
I think that's disabled. Um, now he looks muted. Jean, do, can you try unmuting one more time?
That's true, because we can't record the chat.
Oh, he says he's gonna try to call in. So for me, I would, I would support this now, um, 2.5. I mean, it's reasonably in line with inflation. I understand the hardships in the town. But I also, you know, want, what I don't want to have happen is last year as the budget committee rep, I, I was in the unfortunate position of having to advocate for a very high increase budget. And I believed in that, and that's why I, I brought the data forth that I did. But I also believed at the time that I, I wanted to try to not let that happen again. And my concern, if we go too much lower or if we go flat, is that we're gonna not fund things that really need to be funded. I, I trust the administration since I've been working on the board. I've seen them, you know, cut these budgets down to what they absolutely think they need. So my concern is if we don't fund this, uh, we might end up in a position in a year or two years or three years where we've, we've trimmed and we've trimmed and we've trimmed. And we get to the point where we like, where last year where we literally had science books with the covers falling off that we couldn't reuse anymore. And Josh was taking, you know, casters off of one chair and putting them on another because we didn't buy furniture for so long. And personally, as far as the tax rate goes, I'd much rather see incremental small increases, than, you know, go 1.5, 1.5, 1.5, and then all of a sudden have to do eight again because we've put ourselves in a hole. So my, my idea before I saw any of the numbers here was to try to get in the two to three range, try to get in that kind of general inflation range, somewhere in the low twos, and we're pretty close to that. So I would support this motion tonight, but I would also say I would like to look at, um, purchasing that 118 next time around. That would bring this down a little bit lower, um, using up some of the surplus from this year. Um, and I think as, as Anne kind of mentioned, um, if there are some things that we can buy here or, or, or spend out of trust this year, um, to then in the surplus back up to make up for some of that 118, that would be good too. So I would like to see if we can get a little bit lower, but for an initial number, get over to the M B C. If this number stuck all the way through the process, I would still be okay with it. So I intended to work to try to get a little bit lower, um, but I'm supportive of this number tonight. Jean, can you hear us or can you?
Can you hear me?
I got you.
All right. So I don't know what's going on here tonight. It's crazy. Anyway.
Did you hear the motion?
I did hear the, I could hear everything. I just couldn't respond to it. And I was trying to actually make a motion before Amy, but, um, I was looking at, uh, a fund, fund one balance of 26,69917, uh, which included the removal of approximately $120,000 of the outstanding purchases that we, we've been talking about rather than putting them on this budget, putting them on, uh, you know, using the surplus to make those purchases right now. So I don't know at this point if I can amend the motion or if anybody's amenable to that at this point, just to get that number down a little bit lower initially.
I'm fine with that amendment.
You're fine with that?
Yes.
So Amy, are you saying that the number that we decided earlier minus, um, 118?
Um, I, I need a little bit of help on the math because yes, that's the concept, but Jean just said 120. I thought it was 120, not 118.
All right.
I just used 120. There's a buffer there, a little bit of a buffer. So that would reduce the fund one number, uh, to 26,69917.
Maybe can we just have Amber do a quick rundown of like, this is the original number. This is the line item that would come out. This is the resulting number, just so we're all crystal clear on the numbers.
And that number again when you get it. Please? Please?
Okay, so the.
Yeah, one second, please. I want to.
I have the spreadsheet from last time with the suggested unfreeze numbers and it was 118,155. I'll stop talking so Amber can concentrate.
Is that the, are we using the 120?
That's up to Amy, I guess.
I would prefer to use the actual number from the total on the list of those items. And I just don't have that at my fingertips.
Yep, that's 118,155.
Yeah, so that's the number I'd like to use, even though it's much harder math than just a straight 120.
So the bottom line number for that would be 27,80379.
Thanks Amber, can you just say it one more time?
Oh, the bottom one, okay.
Yep. That's the bottom line total district appropriation.
So just to circle back, Jean, is that what you meant? Is that what you said?
No, I was just, I was going on the fund one. The fund one initially was 26,81017. I used the number 120, but 115.
Last week's budget.
Oh, I don't, did I have a bottom line on this?
That, the, the, I know what you're talking, and you're looking at the previous year, uh, month's, uh, meetings, um, budget. The, the fun one for this particular meeting was 26,875,421. But when the board votes on a bottom line number, they're not voting on just total fund one. They're vote, they're voting on total appropriation.
Right. But by reducing that by a hundred, the fund one that reduces everything by 118, correct?
Right, so that bottom line number would be the 27,809,379.
All right. I got you.
I mean, we would reduce, fund one would be reduced, but it's all in the same. I guess that's where I'm going. I just want to make sure that we approve the right bottom line number, so that's why I'm only mentioning total appropriation.
Perfect.
Because a few years ago, there was a time at a meeting, we voted in the fund one budget and not the total appropriation. So I just don't want to have that happen again.
Yeah, nope. I understand it completely. So, uh, I guess my amended motion would be to, um, approve the budget for the total appropriation of 27,809,379, um, at this point.
Andy, this is Anne. We, we need to vote on Amy's first, correct? Before Jean makes a motion?
I, I think we're just having a friendly discussion and Jean is suggesting that I amend my motion and I am agreeing to amend it.
Oh, thank you, Amy. I didn't hear that part. Thank you.
With the hopes that Anne, that you would second it as amended.
Thank you. My, uh, my volume's kicking out also. Yes, I will second it for discussion. Thank you.
We might have lost Andy. Are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're cutting out a little bit. I think you're okay.
It, it wouldn't let me unmute. Tough for me. Okay, so yeah, so I, I, let me catch up. Amy redid the number, um, Anne seconded for discussion again. So we're back to where we were with a, with a slightly lower number to reflect the 118,155 on the sheet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we can continue discussion unless everybody's all set.
I think we should, um, I think we're at the point where we can move the, to vote.
All right, then on a roll call vote, um, just one more time for clarity to, to, um, recommend 27,809,379 for the total district appropriation on a roll call vote. Um, April?
No.
Amy?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Anne?
No.
And I'm a yes. Um, so motion passes. That gives us something to work with. And now we need to talk warrant articles.
Andy?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I didn't hear, uh, April or Amy.
I got a yes. I'm sorry. I got a, I got a no from April, a yes from Amy, a yes from Jean, a no from Anne, and a yes from myself.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Okay, uh, I'm gonna ask Patty, do you have a recommendation for how you want to tackle the warrant articles? Or has anything changed, um, from your end or Josh's end on this that we need to know about?
So what we've done, um, first of all, we asked Josh to prioritize, which is what the board wanted him to do from the last meeting. So he did that. Um, we also simultaneously sent the warrants to Dean. I explained, um, what our goal was, which was to provide a summary sheet to the voters so that, to help them understand what each of the articles meant and why we put money into them and why we remove money from them. So he did rework some of the articles. He did make a couple of recommendations, um, such as one that wasn't needed. And Kathy put this right on the draft so you could see it. Number six, your agents to expend on a trust fund, so you don't need to put an article. Um, and then there was one that if it passes, you don't need, um, you don't need that. There was one that talked about, um, we can, and we can, article by article, but just as a summary, there was one that talked about the inability to transfer money from one trust fund to the other. So you can't do that. So basically you're gonna have to establish the vehicle trust fund and then decide how you want to fund it. But you can't transfer funds out of the existing trust into another. So they are ordered and, um, corrected in language from Dean.
Uh, Andy, this is Anne. Um, I'm concerned number five to vote and raise the amount of money, you know, the 35,000. And that would be coming out of any surplus, correct? January 1st of 21?
That's correct.
So do we have to establish the fund before we raise and appropriate? Because number six is establishing the fund, is that correct?
Are you looking at the updated warrant from today, Anne?
No, I'm, yes, I am Patty. I'm sorry. I.
Okay, that's all right.
You're right, number five and number six. So, so number six, we're asking for 20,000. Number seven, we're asking to withdraw 32.5. Is that correct?
Yes, so that's where you need to decide. You probably just want to combine them or just create the trust fund and then determine how much you want to fund it with. Because it initially, when we submitted it to Dean, it was gonna come from a different trust fund, which you can't do.
Right, so number six is to establish it for 20,000. But then number seven, we're asking to take out 32,000. We wouldn't have money in there, withdraw the 32.5. Is that correct or am I reading this wrong?
On the version I'm looking at, number seven sends it 32.5 from surplus?
Correct, so I think if we, all right, so I think if we establish the fund with just a thousand, that might be easier for people to understand. I think 20,000, because we're, we're trying to see how free the budget can be going to the, to the. I think if we establish the fund at a thousand and not 20, I think that would be easier to pass. And then do the surplus of 32.5, um, for July 1st of 2021. That's just my idea.
Josh wants to speak to that. Is that okay, Andy?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Now we can.
So, sorry, I had to drop and reconnect on my other computer.
So I don't have the updated list in front of me, but the, the idea was because we were asked to establish it and it was recommended we were gonna be able to transfer over. The 20,000 came from monies that we put into that fund last year for half of the pickup truck, which would have been 17,500. We rounded up to 20,000, which is where we got that $20,000 number. The 32,500 number would now be asking to fund the other half of that truck as well as fund half of, um, the school district van that we, we foresee coming up next year. So that's just a fund that we're not asking necessarily to withdraw that, which then would lead you down to the next item, which would have been to now ask to withdraw that 35,000, which would be for the school district truck. So again, I don't have the updated sheet and I apologize for that, but that's how I see it off the warrant articles that were given to you last week. So there's two funding. There's one established with money. There's one to fund for half a truck and half a van to, to get it into the account. And then there's one to actually withdraw the money we're asking for the pickup truck.
Andy, it might be easier if we go one by one, um, in order. And that way, um, Josh didn't get an updated copy, so he knows where we're at and what the language is each one in order.
Okay, I just want to address that one quickly because I, I should have sent this to you. I forgot. But Jerry Flurry had a comment on the order of this at the M B C, and I think he's correct. If I'm reading this correctly, um, the current one, number six establishes the trust fund and asks the, asks to put $20,000 into it, um, from taxes. Number seven asks to move, uh, to put 32.5 in there from the fund balance on July 21, or I'm sorry, July 1st of 21. But then the next article says to see if we can withdraw 35,000. But at that meeting, we don't have 35,000 in there yet. We don't have 35,000 in there until July 1st of 2021, right? We put 20,000 in there.
Yeah, that was the one that, um, Dean crossed off because you're going to be agents to expend, so you don't need an article withdrawing money from that fund. You'll just.
So that's, okay, so the one that's in yellow is crossed off. I didn't, I didn't understand that. Gotcha, okay. Okay, so let's go back up to the top. Um, so we don't need to do number one. We don't need to, let's see, inappropriate budget committees recommended them out. Okay, so number one is, or number two rather, is just the actual budget number, right? Did I lose you again?
Yep, we're all set on number two.
Okay. Okay. Um, so number three, I'll read it just for Josh and the public to see if the Pembroke School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $70,000 for the purpose of roof replacement and fire life safety items with said funds to come from the building, school building capital reserve fund previously established for this purpose. So this is just taking $70,000 out of a, out of a trust that we already have for roof and fire life safety. Questions, comments, concerns with number three?
Um, Andy, can we put, uh, I don't know if it's appropriate to put the fund balance in that warrant article? Because you know, that's a question that they're going to ask as soon as we try to vote for it. And then Jerry stands up and tells us the amount in each one.
I, uh, I guess I leave that to Patty. I know D, or Amber, I know, I know DRA has specific ways they want that typed out.
Yeah, no, the, the fund balances and the extra language that we've been attempting to add don't belong in the article themselves. But on that, that's a great idea, Anne. On that summary sheet, when we talk about each one, we could put the fund balance on that sheet so that people know.
Thank you. I just figured it'd save you an extra step on the, on the meeting minutes.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Thank you.
Other questions on number three? Okay. So article four is to see, Patty, did you want to vote on these individually or no?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so then I guess, uh, we, I would accept the motion on number three as to whether or not we're going to recommend this article. Or actually, since this is a recommends thing, we have to vote. Do we need a motion on this, Patty? I'm not sure how this goes. This is, or is this a poll?
Yes, you do need a motion.
Okay.
Uh, this is Jean. I need, I'm, I move to approve article three to see if Pembroke School District will vote and raise and appropriate the sum of $70,000 for the purpose of roof replacement and fire life safety items with said funds to come from the school building capital reserve fund previously established for these purposes.
Uh, Dan, I second.
Thank you. So on a, do we need to discuss? I think we already kind of had discussion, but if there's anything anybody wants to add? Okay. Then on a roll call vote, um, we'll start with Amy.
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Um, so that's approved. Moving on to number four, article number four is to see if the Pembroke School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 for the purpose of floor replacement and exterior painting district wide with said funds to come from the school building capital reserve fund previously established for these purposes. Um, do we want to make a motion now? I think that's how we should do it and then we'll have discussion.
I so moved the motion.
Thank you. Sir, a second?
I second Jean.
Thanks, Jean. All right. Um, discussion around number four, $30,000 for floor and painting, um, from a previously established trust fund.
I'm sorry. What was that, Andy?
Sorry, I just reread the article. So $30,000 for floor replacement and painting, um, from the school building capital reserve fund.
Thank you.
So, um, discussion. Okay. Then on a roll call vote, um, start with Jean.
Yeah.
Anne?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Thank you.
Andy, this is, uh, Anne, just a quick question. And I know we talked about it last week. Um, we're going to have a separate document that outlines to the residents what parts we are going to, what school building these go to.
Yeah, I think we can finalize all the details later, but I think we had discussed having some sort of addendum that we include in the packet that day that say, the one that Patty was talking about, we can put the fund balances in there and, and we can give as much detail as we feel comfortable at that point.
Thank you.
Um, so moving on to number five, to see if Pembroke School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $35,500 to be added to the equipment installation and labor expendable trust fund previously established. This sum to come from the June 30th fund balance available for transfer on July 1st. No amount to be raised from taxation. Is there a motion?
Uh, motion to approve.
That's Jean.
This is April. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Um, so discussion on warrant article number five. All right. Hearing none. On a roll call vote to approve article, warrant article number five, um, Amy. Excuse me. I'm sorry. I coughed. Could you say that again, Amy?
That's okay. Yes.
Thank you. Um, April?
Yes.
Anne?
No.
Jean?
Yeah.
And I'm yes. Um, so carries for one on the sheet. Um, okay. Number, previous number six was crossed off. So we're moving on to new number six. To see if the Pembroke School District will vote to establish a vehicle expendable trust fund under the provisions of RSA 198 colon 20 dash C for the purchase of purchasing, replacing, or repairing school district vehicles, to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000 to be placed in this fund, and further to appoint the Pembroke School Board as agents to expend from this fund.
This is April. I'll make a motion to approve warrant article six.
Thank you.
Uh, this is Anne. I'll second.
All right. Um, so discussion on warrant article number six.
Andy, this is Anne. Um, when Josh said the truck and the van, I thought the van went under the food, um, um, budget.
So we, we have a pickup truck and a van that the facilities department uses. We also share it with co-curriculars at times. Um, the van is a, on the food district, on the food service side is a separate entity. So they have their own van. We have our own van.
Thank you very much, Josh.
You're welcome.
Other questions on number six? I just add for the public listening, this was, um, uh, this was a recommendation from the town coming out of the CIP process. Uh, we used to do this through a different trust fund, I believe. Um, and, and this is something that the CIP committee recommend we do for this specific purpose. Okay. Hearing no further discussion. Um, we have a motion to approve warrant article number six on a roll call vote. Um, I think I've started with it yet.
I'm sorry. What was that, Andy?
I just said I didn't think I've started with you yet. So you can go ahead.
Oh, wow. I'm shocked. You got me by surprise. Yes, thank you.
Um, April?
Yes.
Jean?
Yeah.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Thank you all. Um, so that's number seven. To see if the Pembroke School District will, will contingent upon the passage of article number six, vote to raise and appropriate the sum of up to $32,500 to be added to the vehicle expendable trust fund previously established. This sum to come from the June 30th fund balance available for transfer on July 1, 2021. No amount to be raised from taxation. Um, is there a motion?
This is April. I'm making a motion that we approve warrant article seven.
Thank you.
This is Anne.
Sorry, Anne, I heard your name, but that was all.
Oh, I'll second, but I think Jean was trying to second also.
Maybe that's why I got crossed. Um, okay. Uh, so discussion on warrant number seven. Okay. Um, so I just want to make clear the, the, um, again, the, the note that Jerry had for us. Because the original sheet that we saw, you know, asked to expend $35,000 out of this trust fund. But at this time, assuming article number six and number seven both passed, um, there wouldn't be, there would only be $20,000 in there until July 1st. So I just want to make sure, um, that we're all clear on that. We, we wouldn't be able to spend, to expend, you know, we wouldn't be able to take $35,000 out of that account, even though we are agents to expend, because until July 1st, it wouldn't have $35,000 in it. Um, which I'm fine with and the wording here is still great and everything. I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. Any other discussion on number seven? Okay. Then on a roll call vote, I will start with Jean.
Yeah.
Uh, April?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Thank you. Moving on to number eight, excuse me. To see if Pembroke School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of up to $25,000 to be added to the site improvement expendable trust fund previously established. The sum to come from the June 30 fund balance available for transfer on July 1, 2020. No about, no amount to be raised from taxation.
Andy, I'll make a motion to, um, bring this forward, but I do have discussion on it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Go ahead, Dan.
Um, the question I have is, uh, I, I apologize, Amber. I didn't write down what, um, packet I took this out of. Um, I'm looking at the Pembroke trust funds and capital reserve funds. So I'm looking at the balance. If you could verify the balance of that fund at the moment?
Give me one second, please. The balance of improvements is 100,560.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other discussions around number eight? Okay. Then on a roll call vote, um, to approve article number eight, um, Amy?
Yes.
Anne?
No.
April?
Yes.
Jean?
Yeah.
And I'm yes. Thank you. Uh, moving on to number nine. To see if the Pembroke School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 197,500 to be added to the school building capital reserve fund previously established. This sum to come from the June 30 fund balance available for transfer on July 1, 2021. No amount to be raised from taxation.
Um, I'll make a motion to move it forward, but I do have a question for Amber. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll second it, please.
Thank you. Okay. Discussion on number nine.
Um, I do have a question for Amber because it looks like as of June 30th, we have 200,933.57 in that amount. Has that changed?
Yes, we have part of the, um, we are withdrawing 30,000 from that, um, particular fund for this fiscal year. So our balance will be 170,933.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other discussion on number nine? Go ahead.
Andy, this is April. Um, I just have a question. Um, you know, besides making a rainy day fun for the school building capital reserve, um, what is the logic behind, uh, this particular number for the school building capital reserve? Thank you.
Josh, do you want to give us a quick synopsis? Um, I think we talked about it a couple of meetings ago, but that may have been the one that April wasn't here for. I'm not sure.
Yep. So a couple of years ago, the, the school board, prior boards asked, um, to bring forward to them a list of items that we either knew were known entities that were coming up or that were identified through engineering reports or architect reports that we've done throughout the years of items that we know are, are on the bucket list or are coming up on the bucket list, or in this particular case, items that I'm not going to come to you guys and say, we need $250,000 this year for this one item. We need $100,000 this year as well for this other item. To try and identify those items, to try and build, for lack of better words, a savings account to, to build it up for five, 10 years down the road. So when we know 10 years from now, we need the boiler or that's a bad example because we probably need those sooner. Um, a roof that we will have that money there and we're trying to limit the impact of the overall budget um, in, in taxation by building that up as opposed to coming with one big number for all the items that we need in our buildings, which we have about 260,000 square feet of buildings. The life expectancy runs up at a certain time and we're just trying to plan ahead for all that. Again, as opposed to coming to you with one huge number for many different items that could happen in a year.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Andy, Dan?
Yep.
Is there any way that we could lower this number going forward? I'm just concerned 197,500 would not be able to be voted on?
Yeah, I, I, we, we could lower the number. Again, we, we run the risk of what I always say, what's another year? Something could come up. What's another year? Or something could come up and I could be coming to you saying I need $10 for this boiler because it has failed us at this point in time. Or for this roof because it has failed us at this point in time. So could I work on those numbers? Yes. But we do run the risk of those. Um, couple of the big ticket items we know are out there are the ADA upgrades specifically to Pembroke Academy within the district. Um, those are labeled, those are identified. Um, we have them as a high number and that's kind of what made this number jump over the last year or two because that item came in. Um, we're also working on numbers for the entranceway off of Academy Road into Pembroke Academy. So that's another number that's going to come up that we don't necessarily have on here. Um, we do our best to identify all these items and have them there. But as with 2020, this is a fluid document and these numbers do change. The items come and go as well. So you'll see additions and subtractions at times as well. So
Thank you, Josh.
The answer is yes.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. It's just that I would rather have you coming up with a number than a resident standing up and, and changing this amount. And then you're not able to do the items, you know, accordingly. So that's just why I'm asked, but thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Other discussion on number nine?
Hi, it's Jean. Um, yeah, I, I'm kind of with Anne on this. Um, it's a big number. And I'd rather see, Josh, I'd rather see you get something, not you pick it up, but the school district gets something versus nothing. Uh, I think it's going to be very important to work in this number. I, I, you know, if we vote on this number right now, I will vote it to, to be approved. Um, but again, it's still going to have to go to the voters in March. Um, and I think a, a lower number probably would be more appropriate if that's something you can work out.
Thanks, Jean. Other discussion on number nine? I guess I'll just comment. Um, I, I was, I had sticker shock at this one last time around. Um, I'm a little more okay with it now. I think, um, I don't think I'd be opposed to a little bit lower of a number, but I, I don't want to run the risk of not having that money there and having to approve something in, in short order. Um, but I do appreciate that this, I know last time, you know, this was a, a very new document and this was like right at the top. And the risk then is that other things don't get funded. Um, and it doesn't have to be because the community doesn't vote it. It can just be that our fund, you know, our, our money available at the end of the fiscal year is not that much. So I appreciate that this is number nine now and that, I think that makes me comfortable with the number that's on the paper. Because if our, you know, if our fund balance is low and we don't have the money, then you don't owe money for this. Um, but if we do have a surplus, then in my mind, this article puts it to good use and, and things that we know that we have to do. So it's kind of a, a fail safe to eat up some of that buffer if in fact there is one, um, at the end of the year. So I'm kind of on board, I guess, with Jean. I, I would, I would approve this number as is. Um, and specifically because it's low on the list and it's coming from fund balance. It's not just asking the taxpayers for a flat out, you know, $200,000 extra on their tax bill. Um, it also gives us, you know, I think having, having something like this as a transfer at the end of the fiscal year gives, not, not, not that you don't already, Josh, um, but it gives everybody some incentive, you know, to save money where they can on other things so that, so that this you know, to save money where they can on other things so that, so that this is available to do. So anyway, I'm rambling, but I, I would, I would be okay with the number that's there. I'd be okay with a slightly smaller number if, if this doesn't pass, but I wouldn't want to go too low in risk of not getting some projects done that we really need to get done. Other discussion?
Yeah, I just want, you know, I'd like to emphasize that this is not a wish list. This is a need list as we move forward. We're, we're voting on this number representing needless versus a wish.
All right, if there's nothing else, um, we'll go ahead and move the question. So I'll read it one more time just because it's been a longer discussion. So article number nine, to see if the Pembroke School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 197,500 dollars to be added to the school building capital reserve fund previously established. This sum to come from the June 30 fund balance available for transfer on July 1, 2020. I'm sorry, 2021. No amount to be raised from taxation. On a roll call vote, um, I'll go with April.
No.
Gene?
Yeah.
Anne?
Uh, no, I'm just worried that one, that number's not going to pass.
Sorry, I forgot who I do. Oh, Amy, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, and I'm yes. So we can move on to, uh, Patty, how do we handle number 10?
So number 10 got a little lost in the, it shouldn't be number 10 because the, um, that's a reason appropriate uh for a collective bargaining agreement. So it'll probably be up with the budget. So it doesn't get funded in, in any particular order. It's its own article. Um, we are still negotiating on the pair of contracts. So those numbers are not available yet. Um, so you can just skip it. We'll move it up under the budget and as soon as we have those numbers, we'll bring them to you.
Okay.
Uh, Andy, this is Ian. I have a quick question.
Sure.
Total of all of the warrant articles that the money is coming out of the school building capital reserve funds? Because we've got the free total.
Excuse me. Um, I'm sorry, I, I think I heard you wanted the total of articles where money is coming out of school building capital reserve?
Yeah, because I just wanted to see what the total. Because when the residents get there, they're going to go say, okay, we took that out of school building. Now we're taking the next one out of school building. So I'm just trying to see what the total is that's coming out of the school building capital reserve. If these all get passed. So number three, number four, and number nine are all the same reserve? Is that correct?
Um, yes, but number nine's adding two. So money coming out, I think, is just three and four, and I think that's an even 100,000.
Thank you very much.
So we'd be spending 100,000 out of it and then re, replenishing that 100,000 plus 97.5 more.
Thank you.
Yep. So we'll table number 10. Um.
Excuse me. So um, when, when we have the numbers for number 10? Because we only got one more meeting?
Yeah, as soon as negotiations are done.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think we're, we have a non-meeting uh after this meeting. So we'll get an update on where that stands.
Thank you.
And we don't need to do number 11 because number 11 is related to number 10. So I think, I think we just have number 12 left um to see if the Pembroke School District will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of up to $10,000 to be added to the technology expendable trust fund previously established. This sum to come from the June 30 fund balance available for transfer on July 1, 2021. No amount to be raised from taxation.
Andy, this is Amy. I actually think we can and should do number 11 just to keep things moving as streamlined as possible. Obviously, we're not going to put that on the warrant. For some reason, 10 doesn't happen, but for 10, we're just waiting for a number.
Um, I guess so. Ver to Patty, if we can do it, let's do it.
There's um no requirement for the board to vote on it.
Yeah, I don't know. Gotcha.
Okay.
Um, okay. So uh, number 12, uh, $10,000 technology fundable trust from the fund balance on July 1. Is there a motion on that one?
Motion to approve?
Thank you. Um, a second. I'll second it. Okay. You can give, give it to Anne, Sandy. Um, okay. Uh, so discussion around number 12.
So we, Andy, this is Anne. We're going to be adding 10,000 out of surplus that we have June of 2021?
Uh, June 30, yeah, yeah. From the balance of June 30th that we can use on July 1 of 2021.
Okay, and Amber, what is the amount? Um, I think what I see is $60,074.
It is $60,074.
Thank you, Amber.
Welcome.
Other questions on number nine? I'm sorry, number 12? Okay, um, then on a roll call vote, I'll start with April.
No.
Uh, Gene?
Yeah.
Anne?
Uh, no.
Uh, Amy?
Sorry, I went the wrong way on my mute button. Yes.
Thank you. Um, and I'm yes. So that's number 12, and I think that's it. Until we get the um numbers for number 10. All right, uh, misplaced my agenda. Okay, um, I think we made it through something. That's good. Uh, oh, Patty, there's, uh, no, wait, sorry. Uh, 6D is a transportation update from Amber.
Yes, um, I have reached out at to Dale Transportation uh in regards to um their contract and their monthly payments. Um, and what they would ask at, um, currently, we're only paying for bus routes that are being ran. Um, they would like to operate um and seek compensation only for routes that are running time of disruption. So if they're running four routes currently and then we go to remote, they would only seek to continue to pay for those four routes. With that said, they would also like to, as they did in the spring, um, reimburse us back for fuel costs. And they would like to extend that not to just the four um buses that wouldn't run, but the full eight buses. So it would be approximately um 21, $22,000 a savings during that time period, depending on how many days obviously we're in remote.
So Amber, what would be the amount that we would, they're asking for?
Um, well, that, that, the amount that I just gave just on the fuel cost. But we're saying the approximate saving, I believe, each month is around 17, it's 18,000 or so for the four buses. Because we're running four of the eight routes. So they would, they would ask for 17 or eight, let's, let's call it 18,000 um for the current routes that are being run.
So they're asking for 17,000 a month?
That's how much we'd be back in a credit. Um, I don't If you give me one sec, let me just verify something.
Okay, thank you.
So for the four runs, it would be 22,780.
And is that the per month or does that just go from now till uh Martin Luther King Day?
That's what, so currently we've been running four routes. So that's how much it's been equating to each uh each month. Now that could change if we get another routes. Um, if we stay, I mean, there are a couple of variables, but as of right now, that's what the um rate that's been coming through has been.
So it'd be the, the total would be probably, oh, okay. So we're probably, we're going to be in remote for approximately two months. So that's about $45,000?
Right. And currently we've saved um 40 since September.
This is just an off question and you probably will, I'm not sure if you would know or not, but um because the drivers aren't able to drive for us because we're in remote. Is um, do you know if they're offering those drivers to other districts that are in school? So maybe we could offer them some relief?
Yes, absolutely. They are. And they have stated that any driver that is unwilling to take um, they'll work in another district wouldn't be paid is what they've stated. So they absolutely are encouraging those to um help out other districts should another district which I can tell you most districts do. Yes.
Oh, I'm sure. That's wonderful. Thank you very much, Amber.
You're welcome.
Other questions around transportation?
Andy, this is April. I'm just seeking to make sure that I understand this. Um, so the savings that's being represented is, is anticipated billings that we have not received or anticipated bus uh costs that we have not incurred?
The 60,000 are savings we've already incurred.
Okay, thank you. So they're proposing that even though they're not providing buses during the remote period, that we continue to pay them. But they are offering fuel credits? Am I understanding that correctly?
You're correct. So in the, in the spring, we paid the full contract. So it would have been all bus routes that ran at that time. And then they also, and then they gave us a credit back for any fuel. This time they're saying they're not asking for us or the school district to pay the eight routes. They're asking for just to pay for the routes that are currently in. So currently we have four routes being ran. So they're only charging for those four routes. They would like to seek to continue to do that during remote status. And on top of that, they would then reimburse us back for the full eight routes for fuel cost.
Could you give us some numbers to associate with that? I don't know what, I don't understand what the four buses are costing us. Uh, or those billed per month? And also what's the proposed fuel credits?
So the current, I, I actually just stated that to Anne a couple of minutes ago. It's there.
I didn't follow, so I appreciate you repeating. That's why I'm asking for that information. Thank you.
You're welcome. So the four bus, so bus credit was 22,780. If there are any double runs, there would be a charge for that. Um, as we, as they, as we had mentioned in the very beginning.
Um, okay, that's where I'm not following. The 22,780, you said you, we've already realized that credit.
Already, yeah, we've already realized that.
Okay, so I'm trying to figure out for the remote period, which is what they're requesting, how much we would pay during that period and, and then what the fuel credit would be. Those two line items, could you help me out with those?
Uh, uh, April, I don't have that question off the top of my head. I'd have to I'd have to look at exactly how many days calculate that.
So we don't have that data available? That's what it sounds like.
I do not have any answer to that specific question. I can tell you that on a monthly basis, 2,780. What I can tell you for the fuel rate is that the rate that they said is on average for a month, we've been running about 50, almost about 55 gallons of gas at the rate of $2.32. If, if we were to say it's 17 days, which is set 1,159. So it really, I, I'm uncomfortable giving you an exact number because it really depends on how many days it's going to be for. But the amount that they're using, I, the fuel rate is $2,032. If that's helpful for you. And I can certainly take down for, provide it for you for the next meeting.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Sorry.
Um, Andy, this is Anne. I just have one more question. I think all this work you're doing, Amber, with the bus transportation is amazing because it's, there's a lot of extra work for you. Um, so we're paying the bus drivers for four routes currently because we were supposed to have eight, but we only had four. So we're paying four. But then the company can also lend out the same bus drivers to other districts. So we're paying that company. And then the other districts who are using those same drivers will be paying that company also. Is that correct?
So we currently are paying, we currently have four of the eight drivers. We're paying for four of those drivers. The other four, um, if we are not utilizing the four drivers because we're in remote, they would then go to another district and yeah, whatever that district has determined um to pay, um, yes, that is being satisfied in that fashion.
Okay, so I, I just, I think it's great, you know, that we're able to, you know, assist other districts, but um, both districts, they would be paying for the same driver. Is that correct? We're paying for them and in case some other district um also utilizes them, so the, the just, the employer gets paid twice?
I mean, I guess in a sense that is true. Um, but each, each school district has their individual contract. So I guess they're satisfying their individual piece of the contract. But at the end of the day, I would say technically that driver is being covered in both districts.
Right. Thank you very much.
Said, um, a concern that I, uh, the bus drivers, and that has been not just this year. It's been several years and it's statewide. Um, and so it's really difficult one for them to get a bus driver, but it's also very difficult to retain the bus driver, especially in the current state this, this um, this country is in, I would say. Um, so I would be concerned that if we didn't continue to pay um, that one, those bus drivers might permanently go to another district that is short bus drivers. Or two, they may choose not to be a bus driver at all, which means that we would, we, we could potentially be short when we decide to go back either hybrid or fully remote.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Amber. And yeah, I do realize that we could lose them, but um, the companies aren't really guaranteeing, even if we do pay them, that they still will be there maybe in January when we go or try to go remote, I mean, uh, hybrid and right? Because they can't, they can't decide if their bus drivers are going to stay on.
That's very true. I mean, I, I mean, that the, it's potentially be flexible on their end as well. We have actually had in another district. Um, recently, one of the drivers was no longer able to continue due to their own circumstances. So certainly something like that could happen. There is a variable there as well.
Yeah, but they would give you plenty of heads up, correct?
As soon as they find out, they contact us immediately. Not to say that they couldn't say, call me tomorrow and say, you know, we don't have a bus driver for the end of the week, by the end. Um, but absolutely, as soon as they know, they Um, but absolutely. As soon as they know, they communicate it.
Sure. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, Amber. Um, we're going to move on to the next one just because we still got a lot to take care of.
This is Amy. Were we going to talk about live streaming? I wasn't sure what that meant.
Looks like I missed it. Patty, did you have an update as far as Google?
We did. Thank you. Um, I, yes, I did notice that we missed that. Um, I, I think the question, I think it was April that asked about whether or not we should be putting money in a warrant article, um, if we're going to pursue live streaming. And I've been working with, um, Josh, and actually we tested it at Three Rivers with me in my office and pretending that they were live streaming to me as the audience. Um, and Josh brought forward a, let me just look at my hand, a piece of paper here. Um, it's a portable, um, microphone video system that we could actually use in multiple places, which is something that Ann's been mentioning too, that unless we're in the library, we, we don't have a camera because it's stationary. So I think we can pull it off. Josh thinks for maybe $2,500. So I don't think it's something that we need to specifically add. I think we can probably maybe even do it before the end of this year. Um, as long as the rest of the testing works out, because we do have the opportunity, um, to provide closed captioning, which was the legal, um, issue that we were up against that I was hoping we were going to be able to solve. Um, so it's looking good and I think that we can absorb it in the budget. So I don't think we need to put anything in there additionally.
That's good news.
Um, Andy, this is Ann and Josh, you probably already did this, but could you send, um, the channel cam work that information? Because we do have an issue that we're not able to have our camera mobile. If it, if it's not much work.
That, that's not the Josh that, that handles the technology.
Sorry, Josh.
He does a lot, but not that. Um, but, but I will share that, um, and what he gave me, no problem.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for catching that, Amy. Appreciate it.
Um, before we move on, this is April. I have a question. Um, are there any resources that could be, uh, shared with us just to get more information about what that looks like, feels like to do a public meeting via Google meets?
Do you want me to just describe the process and how it works?
Or if you know about maybe a YouTube video where another organization is using it for public meetings to kind of watch that?
I, yeah, I'm not sure exactly how other districts are doing it, but, um, we think we're going to be able to run it directly through YouTube and that's what, that's one of the tests we're performing so that we don't have to, um, live stream it, download it, and then upload it to YouTube. Josh knows, probably knows way more about this than I do, but he thinks there's a way to go directly to YouTube so that people would just be watching. Um, and then the, the system itself would be portable, have microphones for, we'd probably get about eight microphones, eight to 10. So everyone would have their own microphone for audio, um, and then hook it right up to a laptop or a Chromebook.
And from our end, April, I can say it would be very similar. You can see participants, the interaction would be pretty much the same. Um, and I always say that because last spring, uh, Mr. Marson was doing updates every Friday for parents for TRS kids, um, that way. And it worked very well. And at that point, the closed captioning was still in the testing phase, but it actually worked. I was, I was shocked at how well it worked. So, um, I'm glad to hear that they chose to keep going with the closed captioning project.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, um, six E is a graduation proposal. It says Dr. Morris. I think we're also going to hear from our graduation coordinator. Um, but Dan, if you want to kick us off?
Sure. Um, yeah, I, I'm going to transition to, uh, our director of, uh, school counseling here in a moment. Did I just freeze or can you guys hear me? Okay.
I can still hear you.
Okay. All right. Um, so anyway, um, we, this graduation proposal you'll see, uh, still uses the Northeast Delta Stadium as our site. Uh, and there are various reasons for that, that I'm sure Barbara will get into. Uh, the two, uh, items that I want to note right at the top, we do not have a finalized date yet because they do not have a confirmed, uh, summer schedule for their baseball team, which is obviously their number one priority. Um, and then the second item that I want to talk about is, uh, that this proposal still has the four, uh, tickets per graduate, uh, that we had last year. Uh, that was actually, uh, a number that was consistent with all of the graduations that Delta Dental Stadium hosted, uh, last year. Uh, we would also continue to use the live streaming function that has a, a download feature at the conclusion of the event and a digital program. And I, I think some families did like that last year, but I'll, I'll hand it over to Barbara. She can tell you more. Barbara, are you there?
Yeah, I am. Yeah, it was great. I mean, I think it, um, I heard nothing but great, um, comments about the graduation. Um, it was, it went very smoothly. Um, the use of the Jumbotron was fabulous. Um, so there wasn't a bad seat in the house. Um, the students loved it. Um, I, I, I think it's a great venue. Um, they do all of the pre-screening. Um, you know, we don't know what COVID is going to look like in June. We are looking at, you know, the first or second week of June, once, once we know what, um, the Fisher Cats stadium, um, schedule looks like. And I, I just, I think it's a great venue and I, I don't know. I think it, it hits all of the safety concerns that we have. Um, the parking concerns, um, everything. I, I honestly, it, it was a fabulous event. Um, and anybody who was there would probably say the same. Um, I didn't hear any negative responses to that. Um, and I don't think honestly, uh, if we had our graduation at PA like we have in the past, um, I don't think that we can control, um, the amount of people that go, um, how it's handled. It's just, it's just a better controlled, um, function. So.
Great. Thank you. I, I will echo that as somebody that was there. It was, I was amazed. It was so well done. Um, I think everybody had a great time and even afterwards, when it was done and over with, um, it seemed like everybody was pretty conscious of their distancing and stuff. Um, hopefully we could get it like 10 degrees cooler this year because it was rough, but no, it was, it was really great. Um, and if I could just clarify, I think I heard last year, um, at one point, somebody said that it actually ended up costing us less than holding graduation at PA. Is that true?
It is true. It is true. Um, and, and maybe even Josh Coughlin can talk to that, but you know, we didn't have to rent all of the staging equipment, all of the, all of so much equipment. We didn't have to rent. Um, it was just, it was, it, yeah, I think it was, I think it was like $2,000 cheaper or less expensive. Um, you know, I don't have a quote yet from Stephanie, um, who's the woman at Fisher Cats that I'd be, that I worked with last year. Um, they're just kind of waiting for a date. Um, but I have been in touch with her two times already this year. And, um, yeah, they're, they are looking forward to doing graduations again this time. They ended up doing about 21 graduations last year.
Oh, wow. Um, questions from the board for Barbara?
This is April. I do have a question. I do see that there will be a rain date scheduled. What if the rain date is also an inclement weather? What happens in that circumstance?
We'll have another rain date.
Is that just built into the contract?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
That's not a problem. Yeah.
We actually, uh, had to use, uh, the rain date last year. And, uh, I mean, if there's a company that's going to pay attention to weather and have the latest in meteorological tools, it's, it's a baseball stadium. And they were right on top of it and they were very communicative with all of that, uh, very early on, the day before, which was, was helpful.
Yeah. It was, it was a great experience working with them. Um, you know, beyond COVID, I would still recommend, you know, beyond COVID in the, in the years to come. Um, it's a great venue. It's a special venue. Um, they do it really well and, um, we were in and out too. I mean, it wasn't, there's no drag time. They were very professional.
Patty, just to clarify, um, you don't need action, right? You're just kind of looking from a general blessing from the board to continue.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure that you're okay with us, uh, moving forward. At some point Barbara will sign a contract and all of that.
Okay. Are you questions from the board?
Andy, this is Ann. Um, I just wanted to, to thank her for doing an amazing job. Um, I had people saying that it, it was wonderful and they really appreciated that all the extra work we took doing this project. Um, but like, um, like she said, going forward, even after COVID, um, if that's something that we're looking at, would we be able to expand the number of seats per student after COVID?
I'm, I'm pretty sure. I mean, so we only used, so we used the portion of the stadium, um, and with social distancing, you know, you, if you looked around, you know, it looked like it was a little empty actually. So there's plenty of seating. I mean, there's, I, I can't remember how many they sit, honestly, they seat, but it's way more than what we could ever accommodate.
Right, right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. It's my pleasure.
This is April again, and I'm just curious if, um, last year, but of course we know what happened last year may not be an instance this year. Are there any students or families of a graduate who have any barriers to, um, transportation from Pembroke to Manchester?
I didn't hear of any. No one, no one expressed that to me. So.
And if a family does have that barrier, who should they reach out to?
Um, I don't know. I haven't come across that to be honest. So, um, I don't know.
Yeah, that is, that's never been, uh, a consideration that we've had to navigate. Um, I, I wouldn't suggest that we would provide busing, um, for, you know, a student or a family that couldn't, uh, make it. Um, I just, I don't think the demand is there for that. We've never had to, you know, address that situation in the past.
Sort of coupling on that, they were so accommodating for handicapped, um, so handicap accessible, um, with parking and with getting into the stadium and with the bathrooms and everything. It was that they were, they were pretty amazing. And we had a lot of handicapped people, like my, my roster had a lot of handicapped people on it. So, anything else?
This is April. I just want to say that I appreciate, um, this being brought before the, the board at this point for consideration and all the work that you do for kiddos, for our students. So thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. My pleasure.
Agreed. All right. Thanks, Barbara. Appreciate it.
Okay. Great.
All right. I gotta switch to my agenda again. Okay. So we're on agenda, item number seven, which is board reports. And, um, we have the distinct honor of having Mr. Casey with us this evening. Ryan, I appreciate you sticking around this long. Um, do you have news from the student senate?
I do. Yeah. So I'd just like to start by thanking, uh, the entire board. I'm looking forward to resuming the role that I had last year and, uh, working with you guys for the rest of the year. So I will be available for all of these meetings. So if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to speak to any of my experiences and answer any questions you have about a student's perspective on anything that you guys are discussing. So, uh, this year in Senate, we have obviously been challenged with accomplishing our usual tasks through different learning models such as remote and hybrid, obviously. And I know you guys know as well as anyone that virtual meetings are less than ideal, but, uh, we've been working very hard to be as productive and efficient as we can through this form of meeting. So just a couple of things that we've done up to this point. So we have decided on a winter carnival theme as we would have any other year. We decided on biomes. So we're going to do sub themes of jungle, ocean, desert, and tundra. So I'm looking forward to that. I'm hoping to get to do some form of decorations. I think those are some great sub themes for decorating. So we are moving forward with our normal talent show in sort of an unusual way. So our auditions for that will be due on January 8th. We've set up a Google form to submit any auditions. And then by February 12th, we're hoping to put together all of the final acts recorded into one big, uh, talent show, have that voted on in another Google form like format. And then the acts in their class will receive winter carnival points as they would in any other year. So we have worked to do a code word challenge with Mr. Morris's weekly videos. So he's been working very hard to put together these very informative videos and we were kind of brainstorming some ways that we could increase viewers to make sure everyone's getting that important information that he's including. So we have had him throw in some holiday themed code words and had the advisors work together to find those and submit it in. We've also have some prizes lined up for the advisories and classes that win that code word challenge. So just a last thing is we have started working to put together a time capsule of sorts of 2020. It was an idea of one of our teachers. So we're hoping to include a couple of little artifacts that are related to 2020, the year in general, and then some more specific things to our school community and how we've gone about getting through this pandemic. And I'm looking forward to putting that together in the spring. So that's really all I have for now. If you guys have any questions for me now, I'd be happy to answer that, but that's, that's about all I have as of now.
Awesome. I think the outside of your time capsule should be a, a Lysol wipes container.
Something that will certainly be included.
Any questions for Ryan?
This is April. Uh, Ryan, what is your role in the, uh, student senate this year? And how did we get so lucky to have you back? Did you volunteer or were you elected to come to the board?
President of student senate this year. And, um, I kind of volunteered, kind of, um, just decided that I should just fill the role again. I know it's normally a junior. We had some new juniors elected who weren't really experienced in the club. So it was, the advisors thought that I should just kind of as, assume the role again, because I had the experience with student senate all four years. So I, hopefully next year will be a junior and then you'll get to have a rotation of different people, but I decided that I'll do it again for senior year.
Thank you for saying yes and, and welcome to our meetings.
Thank you.
Uh, Andy, this is Ann. I just wanted to thank him for, um, staying on so late with us this evening. And I appreciate what he's bringing to the board. Thank you very much.
Yeah, of course.
Hey, Ryan, this is Gene. Um, quick, well, I don't know if it can be quick enough, but, uh, what's the, you know, general feeling among the students as to the current climate, learning model, everything that goes along with it?
Well, I can only really speak to my experience. I'll try to keep it to that, but I just want to echo what a couple of people said through this meeting. I cannot thank the teachers who have handled this enough. They have gone above and beyond in handling this crazy situation that we're in. And my teachers that I've had have been fantastic throughout all of this. They have been working double the amount of hours they have overtime to make sure that we're getting the best education possible in a model that's obviously not ideal. I would obviously rather be in school right now. I'd rather be in a full in-person model. And I completely understand that that's not safe and that's not the right decision. So you guys made that decision last week. I was tuned in then and I want to appreciate, uh, say that I appreciate you making that decision proactively because I'm hoping to have some part of my senior year towards the end of the semester back in person. And I think taking the steps now to reduce cases with the rise in cases was a very smart decision and I appreciate you guys making that for us. I know it was obviously a tough one.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate it. And we will move on to, um, SAU board, uh, SU exec board. And is there any updates?
Thank you, Andy. Um, yes, we had our meeting last eve, uh, last week. And we went over the, uh, the information on how the, um, learning model is for Pembroke Academy. We also had a request from Wakefield School Board to get information if we were, be interested in, um, basically, um, subbing out our superintendents. And, um, I don't know, Patty, if we took a vote, I was having trouble with audio, but I'm pretty sure that, is that correct?
Um, yeah, they were asking for superintendent services. So I'm not really clear. It probably meant contracting out for everything that the SAU office. Yeah, they were asking for superintendent services. So I'm not really clear. It probably meant contracting out for everything that the SAU office does. But there was certainly no interest among the executive board to try and have us serving another district.
Exactly. Yes, thank you. And then it was also voted to raise the subpay to $100 for the school year 2021. They were having difficulties finding subs and then other districts are paying more. So it was voted to raise it to $100. My concern is that I was concerned for the paras who are in there, you know, not making $100 a day. But it was said that, you know, the paras have benefits and they're also union. The other item is the SAU office will be closed, technically doing remote on 12, 23, 28, 29, and 30. They're open for services. It's just the building itself. So if anybody goes knocking on their door. And I believe Patty Deerfield said that they moved to 100% remote.
Yes, they did.
And that's all I have. Did I miss anything, Patty? I know we tried to make a motion on the, on the policies, but we did not.
Yep, I don't have my notes, but I think that was about it.
Thank you.
Any questions for Anne? Okay.
This is April. Just didn't meet in time. And the $100 rate was a per diem rate for substitutes, is that correct? So per day?
Yes, yes. It's $100 per day that they come in and substitute.
Thank you.
Patty, is that for para and also teachers? Or is it just?
The paras get a stipend if they're covering classes in addition to their pay.
No, if, if we have a substitute need for a para, would they get $100 or the 80?
Oh, gotcha. No, anybody that had to substitute would get the same rate.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
All right. Next up is the AREA Committee.
I can draft that, Andy, if that's all right. Then others can add in. So the discussion at the last meeting, which was last Thursday, primarily centered around the AREA agreement itself. And whether the sending districts and the Pembroke School District wanted to move forward with considering an alternate to the current AREA agreement. And the, you know, the, the alternate that would be the closest thing would be another AREA agreement, but that was updated, you know? And that update could be a big update or a little update. But there was discussion of like going entirely to the drawing board and considering scrapping an AREA agreement and going instead with a cooperative agreement or a tuition agreement and so on and so forth. I'm sorry. Hopefully someone can fill in the date. I don't remember that. But the decision was made that there will be a panel discussion coming up in the new year. And the panelists will be various principals or superintendents who have experienced these different types of, you know, school setups, collaborative school setups. So that the AREA committee can begin to learn more. As April mentioned earlier, there was also a discussion about each school district will need its own legal counsel. And the thought was at the latest because, you know, we were all well in the budget season that for the next, next budget, meaning for the, let's see, 2021, 21, 22, so for the 22, 23 budget, that we would write in a much larger than usual amount to have legal counsel advising the district in the negotiation of whatever it is that we decide that we're gonna do. In the nearer term, that we might want to decide to expend some money or allocate some money or however that works. For legal counsel to advise us with respect to whether the AREA agreement from 1969 is still in force and effect. There was a lot of discussion at the AREA meeting about that. I shared my opinion at that meeting. I don't think it's the majority opinion, but I'll share it with this board anyway. I think that is a complete and absolute waste of time because there is not an answer to that question. There's only a legal opinion from different lawyers who could come up with different answers based on what their client's objectives are. And I really feel very strongly that it's a backward looking, defensive, inefficient use of our time and money. And that we should really focus on forward looking and determining what we want to be happening in the future and invest our time and money in that. I think that's all, those are the high points I recall, but please, others were there, so comment on things that I've.
Andy, this is Anne. Amy doesn't want to tip, tip, tip her own horn, but she did say that she would assist us with coming up with questions for legal. She knows that language. And then, like she said, Peter is gonna come up with a panel. I believe he might have said for our February meeting. But he is going to look at the different aspects of all the different agreements that are out there. And also, he has come recently from SAU 39, who has a different agreement. So they, they came away with action plans. So I applaud Amy for, you know, keep trying to, you know, push a little, push a little when they're a little bit resistant.
This is April. I also attended that meeting and part of what was presented to the AREA committee was was documentation from legal counsel. I do believe it would behoove every member of this school board to read that. Just so you are aware of what information was given to that committee. And I'm curious if we can ask our superintendent to please upload it into the school board's shared drive for each member to peruse.
Patty's nodding.
Thank you.
Any other comments on AREA? All right. Thanks for that.
Sorry, Andy, just real quick, just for a point of clarification. I thought all of us had access to the AREA shared drive. Because if that's the case, then we already have access to those documents that April's mentioning. I totally agree that it would be great if everybody would read those. But I don't want to make extra work if everybody already has access. Patty, can you just clarify?
I think it may just be the area committee members, but I don't know that. I'll have, I'll have to check with Kathy. I thought she created an area folder for the Pembroke Board as well. But sometimes it's hard to remember which documents are where. So I'll just double check tomorrow and make sure you have it.
Thank you. Budget Committee, that's me. So we met last week. There was no updates from the school side because we hadn't met since we had talked to Budget Committee last. Nothing earth shattering in the last couple of weeks. We heard from library, we heard from police, we heard from fire, and we heard from ambulance. And really, there's nothing huge on any side. Police did say in the next couple of years, they'll probably be asking for some more personnel because population has increased and things like that. But nothing really to report back to this board as far as budget is concerned, but that will change drastically as we get into January. Gene, anything from PACE? No, I'm sorry. Are there any questions as far as budget goes?
Sorry.
Okay, go ahead, Gene.
Nothing on pace until February. I'm still trying to figure out a time I can meet with Jorge. You know, about the funding, you know, the outside funding from the sending schools. But until we do that, nothing.
Okay. All right. I have, next is the Renovation Committee Report. Mr. Foss wasn't able to stay on the line, but sent me a email. So I will read that quickly. Says, hi, Andy, I won't be able to stay on the call until the committee reports. We have not met since your last meeting. The group is waiting for me to finish drafting the final report so they can modify and or ratify. Once that task is complete, we will be forwarding to the board for review. So it sounds like they're in the stages of wrapping up and we should have something from them soon. And last but not least is the Principals Reports.
Andy, this is April. Before we go to the Principals, can I give an update on the New Hampshire School Board Association Delegation Assembly coming up? So the New Hampshire School Board has an annual delegate assembly. It's scheduled for Saturday, January 23rd at 10:00 AM. It will be virtual. There's only one delegate, which is myself, which is me. And, but any and all board members are invited to attend that meeting. Something I'm not sure that if this board wants to do or not, but each member of the school board is allowed to submit one or more proposed resolution. So you can seek to amend a current resolution or maybe a new resolution. So that's coming up. Just wanted to share that information. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I guess we'll start with Mr. Morris.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to be brief here. I just wanted to say thank you to Ryan. It's really nice to have him back in these meetings and to provide the student perspective. I'm also a sucker whenever someone talks about my videos. And I'll just say that Student Senate is really working hard and they are trying to be creative. And they're fielding a lot of energetic feedback from their constituents and trying to distill that. And I think they're, they're doing a really nice job. We actually had a winter tryouts beginning today for our winter sports. So it was good to see students in the building for that this afternoon. And with that, you know, anyone that comes on campus has to pass the health screening. And, you know, we, all safety protocols are in place for all of that. I did provide COVID-related information to the AREA agreement. And I'll just, just an overview of that, as I'm sure the board is already aware. It's on average about one, one call now update a night from Pembroke Academy. I've changed it so that those go out at seven and I can edit them and add additional cases so that, you know, it's just one and not multiple going out each day. I have received feedback of frustration from people that, that they're receiving those. And, you know, DHHS has told us that we need to inform our families and you know, the frequency of that is obviously disconcerting, but it doesn't change the fact that I have to do it. And I just want, want to also share that the PA Information Night has been scheduled. Administrators and school counselors go to sending schools to talk to eighth grade parents and students. And we have set that up in a virtual framework with a, we produce a video and we'll share that video and facilitate a remote Q and A. And that will be in late January. That's it for Pembroke Academy.
Great. Thank you very much. Questions for Dr. Morris? Okay. How about Mr. Marston?
Yeah, we just sent out our progress reports, which was, it's always exciting for families. We get a lot of phone calls, what's going on. And so we were able to do that. We also started our winter sports this week, which is exciting to get that stuff going again. I also did want to mention, I guess I feel like all I'm dealing with is COVID right now. It seems to be a lot. But with the current model, I did want you to be aware that kids are actually getting more contact time right now during remote than they do with hybrid. As much as I don't like hybrid, to be honest with you, I mean, both, actually, I want them all back in. But much as I struggle with remote, students are getting more FaceTime with teachers than they did during remote. I'm sorry, during hybrid. So I am getting feedback from staff that they like seeing the kids every day. And the shorter class time seems to be working as half hour classes versus 45, 45 minutes online per class nine times a day is a really long day. So this seems to be a bad situation that we're trying to make work as well as we can. But we do have a lot of people on the ground working really hard in our building. And it is nice to see all the kids at once, even though it is unfortunately through a remote. That's about it at Three Rivers right now.
Thanks. Any questions for Mr. Marston?
Andy, this is Anne. I just have a quick question. When you're talking about progress reports, how is the, how are the grades looking? Are, do we have more students that are, are lower grades? You know, I hate to say failing, but you know, how does it look with their model that, you know, the information that they're trying to learn?
You know, that's a pretty good question. And I think, I'm not quite, I gotta be careful how I answer this. I can tell you the kids are, the kids that are engaged in learning are doing fine. It's the, the hard part is getting some of those kids engaged. And if they're not engaged, there's more kids not engaged right now than typically. We do reach out to them. We do whatever we can to engage them. However, if, like I said before, if a kid is engaged, they're getting something out of this. It's really hard for those kids that, you know, we're interrupting their day. And I think, you know, that's a real problem that I have. But so grades are, right now, it's a progress report. I do think it's helpful for people to get that snapshot in time. And we did get a number of phone calls saying, whoa, whoa, what's going on? And hopefully it was a little bit of a holding the mirror up to, to a few people to make, to their face to make sure they're taking a good look at what they're doing. I don't really have a comparison as to last year, but I would say overall the grades are, are in that percentage of kids, which is higher that are not engaged, are not as good as they could be.
All right. Thank you very much.
Other questions for John? All right. Then we will move on to Ms. Gary.
Hello. So for Hill, similarly, we just had our report cards go out because we're on a trimester, not quarters. So they were emailed and then made available to view on Alma. And I know for us, that's a big change from last year to this year, but I'm excited to kind of get us into that digital age and then really getting everyone to interact on Alma. It's also a great way to communicate with everybody. Our parent conferences, we had them starting last week and I think we've had a great turnout with those. It's being virtual allows more parents to show up because it's quick. You can sit down, open up the computer or on your phone or anything like that. So I think that's a positive thing. And I know we've all kind of talked about even, you know, continuing past COVID, being able to have that as an option for parents, especially if you're working or just, you know, in general for the scheduling. So I heard from a lot of staff that they had a lot of positive feedback in parent conferences and I was really thankful for parents to share those feelings with staff. I know, you know, everyone kind of gets down sometimes about, it's, it's a challenging situation that we're all in. So I'm just very thankful to those who were able to share those positive thoughts with teachers. It did kind of give everyone a little pep in their step to have some of those conferences. So I'm just thankful for that. And if you have not had a chance, I suggest you peruse our Facebook page. I posted some behind the scenes photos of what it looks like for our staff working in a remote situation. And they are creative in how they're setting up their areas. You know, we have board games being stacked and computers on top of it. And we have paras that are working in the hallways. I mean, it's just everywhere. It's really, you know, just everyone's trying to do the best that they can right now. So if you haven't had a chance, I suggest you look at those. Some of them are pretty fun. And then just a couple of notable things that I kind of want to keep on our radar is that I have had in the past few days, quite a few more staff members who've needed to work remote because their children, their schools or their daycares have gone full remote in response to, you know, COVID cases and stuff like that. So that's definitely put a strain similar to what John was saying about don't think we would have been able to be open right now. So being remote is definitely being consistent and it's very similar. Our students are seeing their teachers live every day, and that's been another positive thing to come out of the remote. And then I think that's the only, the only other thing that, that we're really struggling to right now is the coverage for our remote sessions. We have two subs that will, they're not available every single day. But if teachers are out or even pairs that are providing support are out, we struggle very much to cover those. So teachers will push asynchronous work and then notify parents as soon as possible. But right now covering those remote live sessions is a challenge. So that's it for us. But like I said, if you haven't taken a, a look, go look at those behind the scenes photos. It's pretty, pretty fun.
Thank you very much. Questions for Hill?
Andy, this is Ian, and I just wanted to ask how, how you're seeing, how Hill's seeing their, their grades for their children.
It's a lot of similar, it's similar to what John's saying. The amount of engagement that you get from a kiddo is drastically changes, you know, or how well they're doing with things. Or a lot of things you'll see as far as some of our kiddos that are at a daycare center might struggle a little bit more. So we're kind of getting creative on reaching out to them, seeing if they can help set up some areas for them. And then for the most part, we've really tried to also target those students who need, have additional needs and trying to see if we can bring our special students or anybody like that that needs some help into the building for small periods of time to work and support them on CSO activities and things like that. So that's been helping us. I definitely think after listening to your question, it's something I wanted to dig in a little bit more to see if I'm noticing a pattern of where I would expect us to be with competencies at this point versus where we could have been last year. The only other tricky piece to this is with Hill and Village merging, there was a difference, you know, a little bit of a difference in the way that we're grading. So we're trying to still work on merging everybody together. So that's just some of the work that we're going to do to kind of get that picture.
Thank you very much. Yeah, because my concern is that, you know, with going remote, we put the children in, from the classrooms now to daycare centers. And I was concerned about what their grading looks like. And we also have concerns with the older students, you know, compromising their amount of time that they can be on doing their learning when they're trying to support the younger students as, you know, the parents are working.
It's definitely a challenge in any of these and, and we, you know, none of us would, I would want these to be the idea. It's not the ideal situation for it, but we are seeing growth with kiddos. You know, jumping into CSO, there's a lot of rigor that's going on that I'm excited about. Still being able to see a lot of what we're working on in a normal year in this format. But I am going to kind of dig a little deeper because I think it's an interesting thing to kind of really look at.
Right. Thank you very much.
Others?
Um, Andy, this is Ian. I couldn't get my, my computer to unmute. I wanted to ask Mr. Morris what he's looking, you know, what PA is looking like, you know, with, with remote in their grading.
True.
Uh, yeah, I mean, in terms of student performance, I'll, it's very similar to the other schools. I mean, obviously a different demographic, but the students that are engaged are continuing to do well. And the students that are not engaged continue to struggle. And the challenge that we have when we're remote is it's harder to engage them. And that is particularly true when we're talking about cameras being muted. It's very difficult to engage with students. I mean, we have teachers that teach to Google Classroom icons all day long. And, you know, I've talked a little bit about that, but it's in my videos, but it's, it's just, it's really challenging. I mean, there are so many cues that teachers pick up on when they can see people. And when you can't see someone when you're trying to do a virtual meeting, it becomes very difficult when you're trying to teach them something. So that I, I know has been a huge obstacle for our teachers. And then in addition to that, just, you know, I mean, we're setting out a lot of communication. And sometimes those systems aren't set up on the other end. That's not the case, obviously, for everyone, but it is a challenge. And it's kind of like, well, if the post mail's not set up and the inbox is full and, and Alma hasn't been activated. You know, I mean, we've, we've done house calls and we've tried to engage in, in different ways. But it's just, it is definitely challenging.
Yes. Thank you very much.
All right, anybody else going once? Okay, thank you all. Appreciate it. And that brings us to agenda item number eight, which is policy review. Patty, looks like you've got a note before we start talking about actual policies.
Yes, I have a little bit of a conversation. And before I do that, depending on what the outcome of this is, I did want to remember to give you an update on the home ed instruction policy that April asked me to look into that Google was indicating a change had been made that I was unaware of. And I did check into that. And unfortunately, when you move a document from one folder to another, it shows as something, you know, not necessarily an edit, but something happened with that document. So it wasn't, the language wasn't edited. It was just moved from one folder to another. So it was the same policy that had been presented. And then just also another note for today, April did share the information that she had mentioned at the last meeting that she was going to get from her meeting with the home ed. I can't remember what you called it, April. But she shared some information and a model policy that we did add to the drive later on today. Though that's the update, the conversation that I was hoping to have with you. Unfortunately, policy development falls at the end of the agendas. And it's a really important function of the board. And given all the budget work and the pandemic and the learning model conversations, it tends to kind of fall off at the end. You know, it's, we're at 10 o'clock and we still have to have a, a non-public and a non-meeting. So something that Peter's been working on with his districts that I'm really interested in and would like to throw out there is that we are desperately trying to get our districts updated in the School Board Association sample policies. So every time there's a legislative session, the new rules come out. And then the School Board Association does sample policies to keep you up to date with the new changes. We are really far behind. We have policies really old. We have policies that are optional, that are really not needed and can be deleted. So some of the other districts have started choosing to approve School Board Association sample policies in batches. So that you're in compliance with the law, you have the policies. And then at your leisure, if there's a policy that you're interested in working on, we can add it to the agenda at any time. But at least you're up to date, you have the policies you're required to have by law, and you have the most recent legislative changes in your policy. So that's something that I think the board should consider moving forward, and I would ask you to consider that.
Andy, this is Ian. I have a question. Patty, what do you feel about like a subcommittee? Just two school board members that we were not holding a quorum to do a subcommittee on these policies?
Yep, that's something other districts have done as well. I think at least one district in our SAU and other districts, I know sometimes with bigger school boards, you only have five people. But certainly if you have people that are interested in working on that offline and then bringing recommendations to the board, that would be fine. I just think we need something in place to move forward and keep you in compliance.
Thank you. Andy, I would be interested in, in a subcommittee. That's just my thoughts.
Okay, others?
Andy, this is April. I would volunteer for a subcommittee on board policies. Also, I do think it would be helpful when these policies come up on the agenda to somehow have them listed as required or optional policies, or maybe even potentially obsolete, just to help us manage kind of the priority we should take them in. I think that would be very helpful.
Okay, other thoughts?
This is Amy. I am very attracted to the idea of batch approving School Board recommended policies. I don't think it's a great use of this board's collective time to re-wordsmith policies that I know that the really experienced and talented professionals at the School Board Association have already wordsmithed. I'm not sure a subcommittee is going to solve our problem here because I think the subcommittee, I don't know, I just worry that out of that would come more time consuming focus on individual words and punctuation. I think it might lead us away from increasing efficiency, which I think is the gist of the recommendation. So I would love to try batch approving based on what the School Board Association has put forward. And to the extent that that was a suggestion that we don't have to do any policy work tonight because it's too late, I would also accept that.
All right, Jean, your thoughts?
Yeah, since my phone just went into nighttime mode. As far as the batch addressing of the issues, I'd like to make a motion. And if it's out of line and you don't want to do it, that's fine. But I'd like to make a motion that the board approves IHBG Home Education Instruction, DGA Authorized Signatures, DK Payment Procedures, and EBBC plus JLCE Emergency Care and First Aid as a block.
Okay. Is there a second?
This is Amy. I'll second that.
All right. Discussion.
Andy, this is April. I did some research. I've had conversations. I did ask the information be uploaded to the drive for my board members to review. In particular, tonight, there are individual policies that do need to be discussed and things that do need to be brought forward. So I, I do not support the motion of doing a block approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. One more thing. I am willing to take action and bring forth things tonight on these policies. Thank you.
Okay.
So Andy, this is Ann. So is April looking to address these policies separate instead of just a block?
I think she indicated if this were, if this motion were to fail, that she would be willing to take action on some, if not all of those.
And I just wanted to ask the question, is there, is there adjustments to these policies that April's suggesting?
And there are. As of now, we currently do not have a policy DGA that is required by law. That one, I'm, I would be A okay with us going ahead and approving tonight. There are some concerns about IHBG, also some concerns about DK. And I really just have a question about EBBC slash JLCE. I'm just curious if the nurses had weighed in. Part of that policy talks about administering Narcan and the school district having Narcan on our premises, funding that. But of concern to me is that policy is that if Narcan is used on someone by school staff, that not only is that reported to the emergency medical personnel, but that's also to be reported to the police. And I definitely think that warrants some conversation about why it needs to be reported to the police. And also, if I may go, go in, if you, you know, we'll take a few moments to look at the information regarding IHBG. I reached out to the New Hampshire Home Education Advisory Committee regarding the policy that was being proposed to us. There were several discrepancies that they found in the New Hampshire School District Association's policy. And so I wanted that to be available so you all could look at, take a look at that. That was posted, I think it was on Granite State Educator's website in detail. They then partnered up with the School District Governance Association of New Hampshire. And there's a model policy. And if I was going to move forward on IHBG, I would make a motion that we move forward on the SDGA NH model policy, which doesn't have as much language and really just depends on the state statutes and administration rules that we already have in place. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Excuse me. Any other discussion before we move the question? Okay, so we've got a motion and a second to approve the following policies as presented. IHBG, DGA, I should give the names. IHBG Home Education Instruction, DGA Authorized Signatures, DK Payment Procedures, EBBC slash JLCE Emergency Care and First Aid on a roll call vote. I'll start with Jean.
Yeah.
April?
No.
Ian?
No.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Again, like Patty said, if there's, April, I'm looking at you. If you've got particular concerns like with IHBG, it can definitely be added to the agenda at a future meeting. So it's not, not like we have to stick with these for any, you know, predetermined amount of time or anything like that.
Okay, well, can I, I'd like to make a motion now that we accept the School District Governance Association New Hampshire's model policy for IHBG to address home education instruction.
Okay.
I'll second. This is Ann.
All right, discussion?
Andy, again, this is April. I just want to state that's because of discrepancies found in the New Hampshire School Board Associations. Those are detailed. Anyone who wants to take a look at those, they can certainly go to, anyone, member of the public, to Granite State Home Educator's website. They actually have a copy of the New Hampshire School Board Association's policy as well as all the data and concerns that they have with the policies. Some that doesn't align with current state statutes and administrative rules. Also available for public consumption in the resources tab of the School District Governance Association website is the model policy for IHBG. That policy is actually called homeschooling. Again, it addresses home education.
Thank you. Are there discussions?
So Patty?
I just question, I, procedurally, if the board approves a policy, then if you want to go forward with another policy, I think it has to be on the agenda for multiple readings, according to your School Board Policy for Policy Development. So maybe if, if the, whatever the board's pleasure, I'm happy to oblige. But maybe we put the policy that April's referring to on the next agenda. Does that make sense as a first reading?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with the policy that you're referencing off the top of my head. But if it says multiple readings, I suppose we have to do multiple readings.
Sure. Andy, could we also get on there, Policy DK that the majority of the board approved? There's actually a clause in the draft that was given to us that does not match the New Hampshire School Board Association's policy. And for example, the DK that was approved tonight has language that says the, that the superintendent can authorize payments where the School Board Association's policy, this language does not match. And it states that the payments, if they have been previously authorized by the school board. So there are some discrepancies in what was in our drive and the, what's actually in the sample policies on the New Hampshire School Board website. So can we please get both of those back on the agenda?
I took a note for both of them. I, I think what I'm going to try to do is do one next time. But if, if we get the agenda for next time and it's lighter than I expect, I'll throw both of them on. If, if not, I might hold DK until the following meeting, just because we're not getting through. We, we got to shorten these meetings somehow.
Sure. Could we, could we also ask our superintendent to post the current proposed policy of New Hampshire School Board Association's DK without any edits in our drive?
Sure.
Thank you.
Andy, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So are there specific steps that we have not taken tonight, Patty, that you would, that, that we ought to take if we want to move forward with the batch approval process you described?
No, it's really a matter of me putting the, the updated policies on your agenda as they come out. And there, there are sometimes 10 or 12 of them that come. And I'd like to start putting them on when they're updated so that we can get you into compliance. And then, you know, whatever else the board wants to do for adding things to the agenda, let Andy know when I'm having. And then, you know, whatever else the board wants to do for adding things to the agenda, let Andy know and I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I'm on board with that, Patty. I think, I think it, you know, at least the things that we have to have that were out of date. I would also like to know about things that we have, um, I think April mentioned it as obsolete. If there's a way, not to add more work to you or to Kathy, but if there's a way to denote, um, you know, necessary, new, obsolete, things like that on there, I think it might help us get through. You know, if we can do a motion for obsolete ones and a motion for new ones and, you know, we can do them in batches like that. I think if we have a little better idea of what we're looking at.
Sure, I can do that.
Great. Okay, um, well, the ones that needed action have action. So I think we're going to move on then to, uh, number nine, which is informational items. Do you have anything, Patty?
I do not. Thank you.
Okay, um, then we are at number 10, which is our second public comment period. As with earlier, go ahead and use the raise hand function if you've got something to contribute to public comment. Um, and we will go through those and we will also open up, um, a couple of phone numbers at the end to see if, or, well, we'll recognize them. I keep forgetting. We don't have to open those up anymore.
Uh, you have Tim Girardi.
All right.
Evening, everyone. Um, I'm gonna start by saying that I'm just totally underwhelmed, uh, by the recommendation that was put forward earlier. I was sincerely hoping for more. Now I see that we're probably something around six weeks behind schedule, where we should have been taking really the next few weeks to absorb debate, question, what, uh, a recommendation or plan would be. Now we're just further behind the eight ball again. And this is just being compounded from a lack of effort that took place over the summer to have a, I'll say again, proactive approach, uh, to how we're managing the school. I'm in a planning session right now, like I do every year for work. We plan for our upcoming fiscal year. And what I drive is a series of models and plans and approaches that we can take. And I'm not seeing that here at all. And I want to be clear, um, because people do comment, um, around the teachers and the principals and so forth. This is not geared towards the teachers or the principals. It's, it's the leadership of the, of the SAU and, and this school district. I am continued to not see any type of progress. And I'm going to keep asking, I want to see a plan. I want to see parent choice. And we have got to figure this out. I mean, just the blanket statement of we're gonna go to hybrid. What's hybrid? What's the bus schedule? What's the financial impact? Um, what are the meals going to look like? Is hybrid five days a week where we're three days in the classroom, two days in, uh, remote? So many questions and there are no answers. We desperately need to have this mapped out. And with each passing board meeting, we keep losing time. It is gonna be at least February by the time we get anything figured out. And that is just unacceptable. We had time. Now I'm desperately worried about what's going to happen. Where's parent choice? How can we have a path to get back to the classroom and move things forward? Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Um, Dan, I don't see other hands. Do you see other hands?
I do not.
Okay, um, looks like we've got a couple on the phone lines. If you're on a phone and you want to contribute, you can hit star six. And I think I'll be able to see you unmute, maybe. If not, just go ahead and state your name. Looks like we got one more hand. Um, don't hear anything from the phones. So we can take that other hand.
All right, Karen Rusing?
Karen, can you hear us?
Is that better?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I apologize for that. Um, thank you all for staying on so late. I was under the impression this summer when Hill School, Rivers and PA presented 50 pages of documents for what a hybrid model would look like, was presented to the school board and the community. So I don't really know what other options people are looking for when each school gave 50 pages of how it's going to look with, with a partition, without a partition, six feet this way, three feet this way. We're all trying our best, but I was under the impression that we were provided those documents. So I'm not too sure. You know, I, I want my kids in school. I absolutely do. I miss my teachers. I miss all of my teachers. But I'm not too sure, like, how we can really make it work. And it's not just Pembroke, New Hampshire. It's the, in country, it's the world. It's, it's, it's a pandemic. But I, I thank you all for your hard work. I just, I, I'm, I'm not too sure how much more these people can give with the reentry team and teaching our children, remote slash hybrid, whatever. I'm not too sure how much more these people can truly give. We're all just trying our best and I'm, I, I'm sorry. I'm, thank you for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I think those are the only two hands or those two people that already spoke. Didn't hear anything from the phones, so I think we will move on. Um, so, so, um, all right. So the board has need to go into non-public session in accordance with New Hampshire RSA 91 dash A colon three small, or roman numeral two, small letter A. Patty, is there anything other than A?
Nope.
Okay. And letter A is the dismissal, promotion, compensation, or discipling of an employee or the investigation of any charge against him or her. Um, so 920, or I'm sorry, 1028 on a roll call vote. Jean? Amy?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Ann? Ann, I didn't get it.
All right, yes.
And I'm yes. Thank you very much. So you'll be moved to a virtual waiting room if you would like to stick around for the end of the meeting. It'll take a minute to get everybody over there. And then when we come back from non-public, you'll be readmitted.
There we go.
All right, um, I'll ask everybody to just double check that they're muted. And we'll move on to agenda item number 12, appointments, resignations, and retirements. It looks like we've got one.
I'm wondering if Kathy uploaded this to the drive because I don't have a copy of it. I mean, you do have one retirement and it is, um, per the collective bargaining agreement. So it's, I mean, the person's name is not overly relevant because it's a benefit that's due under the collective bargaining agreement. And I can get you that information at the next meeting.
Is there a retirement? Or for any reason, or can we just do it next time?
Yeah, it's already in the budget because we knew that it was something that the employee was entitled to. So we can do it next time. That would be fine.
Okay, I'd be more comfortable at least seeing a name and putting some paperwork with it.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, then. Uh, I don't have anything else on the list. I just wanted to note that our next scheduled meeting is January the 5th at 6:30 PM. And just a reminder that, um, two days later on, January the 7th, we will be bringing our budget to the Municipal Budget Committee for our first in-depth conversation. I will, since the budget was approved tonight, I will get that over to, um, Mark tonight or first thing in the morning. So they can start looking at it. And, um, I know Ann said she was working off of a spreadsheet and I don't know where she found it. But if, Amber, if you could point me at that, um, Budget Committee did request if they could get it in spreadsheet format so they can more easily tinker with it. So if you wanna, if someone can point me in the right direction, that would be great.
Andy, I just have a question. Um, obviously, we will be bringing our budget to the, let's see, on the 7th. Is that like the royal we in terms of like you do that on behalf of all of us? Or does that mean we all should attend that meeting?
Nope, you're certainly all welcome to. Um, but it, the we in this case is me, Amber, and Patty. And Jean, if he so chooses, he's the Budget Committee alternate.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Andy, did you ask for an Excel copy of the budget?
Yeah, if you've got one. I mean, if it's not something that you've created, that's.
Yep.
Okay.
We can get that. We can get that to you.
Awesome. All right, um, then I will.
Um, I just wanted to do a quick, um, reminder. The Santa Claus is coming to town on December 19th. He starts from 1:00 to 3:00 at the Safety Center.
All right, thanks. And, um, I think we've got nothing left, so I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. Oh, Jean got me.
All right, is there a second?
This is Ann. I'll second.
All right, on a roll call vote at 10:39, Jean?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Amy?
We have a, uh, non-meeting right after this, right?
Yep.
Yeah, yes.
And I'm yes. So thank you all very much. We'll talk to you in 20 seconds or so.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.